I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu?
Here.
Mr. Sizmar?
Here.
Mr. Hong?
Here.
Mrs. Lacks?
Here.
Mrs. Reese?
Here.
Mrs. Se- Mr. Seeler?
Here.
Mr. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Winston?
Here.
President Becker?
Yes, we have a quorum. Please rise and salute the flag. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published at the Board of Education office and written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcasts. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. We are going to start the evening with a resolution of commendation for one of our high school teachers. I would like a motion for the following resolution. Resolution of commendation: New Jersey Vietnam Veterans Memorial Foundation 2019 Teacher of the Year. Whereas the New Jersey Vietnam Veterans Memorial Foundation recognizes Robert Ganji as their 2019 Teacher of the Year, the Memorial Foundation introduced this honor in 2018 to celebrate the 20th anniversary of the opening of the New Jersey Vietnam Veterans Museum and Education Center. And whereas Robert Ganji was selected by the Teacher of the Year Committee consisting of staff and members of the Board of Trustees for his commitment to the teaching of the Vietnam era. For over a decade, Robert has brought students from his course, Vietnam: A Time of Turmoil and Change, to tour the memorial as part of his curriculum. During these trips, he serves as an unofficial photographer of the memorial and has captured dozens of beautiful images showing tour guides interacting with his students. His photos have been used in publications as he is able to truly capture the passion volunteers bring to their tour experiences with students. And whereas this honor, a tribute to Robert's hard work and dedication, has brought local and state recognition to our schools, the district, and the community, now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends Robert Ganji.
Shall I move?
Second. Move by Mr. Winston, second by Mrs. Lacks. Is there any-
Who is me?
Mr. Simmons? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion carries. Mr. Ganji.
Thank you, guys. We're very honored. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have a treat. From Wannsthorfer, second and fourth grade students will be presenting, oh snap, let's travel that map. These students worked together to research the many battles that took place in New Jersey during the Revolutionary War. Their teachers are Caro Chaco and Christina Frankie.
Hi, my name's Christina Frankie and I teach fourth grade Language Arts and Social Studies at Wannsthorfer. Last year in January, we applied and received an EBF grant for the Nat Geo Giant Map of New Jersey, which fits directly into our curriculum of studying the history of New Jersey. So students researched specific battles of the American Revolution and created Z-charts based on the most important information. Then students used the Giant Map of New Jersey to locate those battles and take note of its surroundings. Students were challenged to think about why New Jersey was an ideal location for many Revolutionary battles. So right now, we have Ronan and Clota, who are going to talk about one of the battles they studied, which was the Washington Crossing.
Washington's Crossing took place west of East Brunswick. New Jersey was an ideal location for many Revolutionary War battles because the Delaware River is along it.
Then we included the most important information on our Z-chart. This event happened on Christmas 1776. This was an important battle because it proved the Amer- that the Americans weren't going to give up. It surprised the British and they realized America was a strong force. This was the turning point in the war.
Now we have Sahana and Niti Ramkumar, two sisters, who study the Battle of Gloucester.
The Battle, the Battle of Gloucester took place southwest of East Brunswick. It was an ideal location because it was near Philadelphia. This battle occurred on November 25th, 1777. British General Howe sent his troops from Philadelphia to Gloucester, New Jersey, to force the American troops out. George Washington sent General Lafayette to the same spot in a surprise attack to defeat the British. This battle once again proved that the American patriots should not be messed with.
These are some pictures of our second and fourth grade students collaborating on the Giant Map. And those are all the battles in orange. And that little green piece of paper is where East Bron- it is located in, within East Brunswick. Thank you.
Great job. You guys should be tour guides at a museum or maybe should do superintendent's report tonight.
Don't, don't worry, you don't have to. You did a wonderful job. We got to watch you talk so beautifully and we learned something tonight. So thank you very much. And I hope the parents are very proud because you should be. Now we're going to take a very short recess to allow our young guests to get home and do homework. Thank you again for coming. And now we come to the superintendent's report. Dr. Valesky?
Thank you, President Becker. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to take a moment to reread the statement that I sent earlier today regarding a situation that occurred yesterday at our high school. Copies of this are also available on the table adjacent to the, to the exit door over there. I want to inform the school community of an incident that occurred yesterday at East Brunswick High School and has been inaccurately re-reported on social media. Yesterday morning, before the beginning of the instructional day, a disagreement between two students over a seat in a common area at the high school quickly escalated into an exchange of words and a physical altercation. Ultimately, the fight was determined to be a bias incident and was immediately reported to the East Brunswick Police Department and the County Prosecutor's Office in accordance with Board Policy Number 8465, named hate crimes and bias-related acts, and also in accordance with the law. The East Brunswick Public School District values our diverse student body and community. The district does not tolerate any incidents of bias, discrimination, harassment, intimidation, or bullying, and takes swift action if such an event occurs. I want to assure the East Brunswick community that we have been and will continue to be deeply committed to promoting and maintaining a safe environment for all of our students and staff. And then later today, we were in receipt of a press release that was through the County Prosecutor's Office, which I also like to read for the record. Copies are also available. Middlesex County Prosecutor Andrew C. Carey and Chief James Conroy of the East Brunswick Police Department announced today that a female student from the East Brunswick High School has been charged following an incident which took place yesterday at the school. A juvenile female student under the age of 18, whose name will not be released due to her age, has been charged with simple assault, harassment, cyber harassment, and disorderly conduct following an altercation with another juvenile on the school premises. Due to the circumstances surrounding the events, the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office and the East Brunswick Police Department are continuing to investigate the incident pursuant to the Attorney General's Bias Incident Investigation Standards. And it goes on to give a contact information. On a personal note, as superintendent of schools, we are deeply saddened by the event that occurred at the high school. And that singular event does not represent, in my opinion, the good work that all of our students do, the diverse community we represent, and what a typical person would see in our school district every single day. That single event does not represent East Brunswick, it does not represent the Board of Education, it does, does not represent the administration, and certainly does not represent me. But I want to personally apologize to the Muslim community for the event because of the impact it's had. So let me begin with the rest of my superintendent's report, which actually has some good news in it. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students at Bowman Monroe Elementary. The art teacher of these talented students is Sue Brewer. Ronald Lieberman is the principal. I had the opportunity to join our sixth graders at this year's Fairview Environmental Education Trip. Students have been on the lake during their boating class, working together during their action socialization experience, and sampling the stream for macro and vertebrae. Congratulations to our March High School Athletes of the Month. Students were selected for this honor by the coaching staff based on performance, demonstration of leadership, effort in practice, and for modeling exceptional character. Third quarter report cards can be viewed online through Parent Access on Tuesday, April 23rd. Hard copies will be made available upon request for anyone without Internet access. And spring recess begins Monday, April 15th. Schools will be closed through April 22nd. Schools resume on Tuesday, April 23rd. Administrative offices will be closed on Thursday, April 18th, through Monday, April 22nd. And if I could, I would also like to, for the community, read a factual statement. We had a board meeting on March 28th. We had a number of participants at that meeting who spoke of the good of the cause. And I think a number of things need to be factually stated, so if you'll bear with me for a second. The Board of Education Administration heard the concerns expressed during the March 28th, good of the cause, during the, regarding the course and programs at Hammershold Middle School. Fact, while the Board of Education had previously given consensus on redesigning the math program and Hammershold Middle School schedule, the schedule changes were not on that night's agenda because critical work needed to be done before any formal board action was taken. Fact, the proposed curricular changes were endorsed by the Hammershold Administration. Fact, it is our standard practice to notify staff of proposed changes as well as involve them in curriculum development and program or material selection. Fact, due to the misinformation that was produced and circulated on social media sites beginning the evening of March 26th, the Board was required to prematurely discuss proposed revisions prior to the Curriculum Committee Review. Fact, recommendations for the Hammershold revisions are based on teacher feedback and are data-driven and with the best interest of all students in mind. Fact, health instructional minutes need to be increased to ensure compliance with state law. Fact, cycle courses are not being eliminated. They are being reviewed and updated. Fact, those revisions will be made with full consultation with teachers and curriculum supervisors. Fact, as superintendent of schools, I have not recommended nor authorized any changes to teacher assignments as the result of the proposed changes to Hammershold Middle School schedules. Fact, new programs and courses will be presented to the Curriculum Committee and final approval of both the curriculum and program is granted only by a majority of the Board. Fact, Churchill Junior High School's comprehensive arts curriculum includes 40 different courses within the practical arts, fine and performing arts, theater, and music. And East Brunswick High School's offerings include 52 different courses in those same domains. And a final fact, the Board Administration has been and continues to work to ensure that we provide world-class education for our students with focuses on both academics and the arts. Thank you, President Becker.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. I would like to add that the Board has asked for two additional considerations for the proposed look at the Hammershold curriculum. One, we have asked for consideration of an addition of a theater arts elective class. And we have also asked that the arts be represented in cycle courses in both sixth and seventh grade, not one or the other, both years. And now, without any further ado, we come to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comments on educational issues and the importance of providing an opportunity to the public to express themselves on school-related matters of concern to the residents of East Brunswick. To allow for a fair and orderly public comment period and in accordance with Board bylaws, individual comments are limited to five minutes. Members of the public are reminded that this is a public televised meeting. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff should generally first be addressed by meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. I'm going to ask that everyone please respectfully adhere to our five-minute limit. We want to ensure that everyone has their turn to speak. Please do not be insulted when Mr. Juliana informs you, you have a minute left, or it's time to stop. It's not directed at you, it is merely the five-minute rule. I'm going to ask Board members to please withhold any comments until after the good of the cause is closed. And I ask everyone to remember, we agree to disagree. We also agree to respect each other, to be kind to each other, and to listen to each other. I look forward to respectful good of the cause. When you come up to the microphone, you will be asked to provide your name and address for the record. So, I don't know, is anybody out there want to come up and talk to the Board during the good of the cause? Please approach the mic, and if you'd like, you can line up against that wall. Our security guards will help you, show you where to go. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. First of all, I am not resident in, in East Brunswick.
That's okay.
Is it okay?
We like you anyway.
For the record, my name is Hamad, H-A-M-A-D, last name Chebilla.
Thank you.
I am the religious director of South Brunswick Mosque, call it ISCG. I am here to see what's the fact, as our superintendent. Thank you for your apology about, on behalf of what happened. But let me, before, before I say thank to all of you, let me thank one of the security men. I met him 7:30 exactly when I arrived to the parking lot. He directed me to the large room to offer my prayer, sunset prayer, as a Muslim pray five times a day. Then when I get out, the room was, was full. He said, "That gentleman came first. Please allow them to come in." And I like to thank that security man. Second thing really, yes, media can mislead all of us to escalate any issue. And we are not here, I am not here, I'm talking about myself. I am not here neither to defend the Muslim Guard or the other Guards. I am here to listen to the fact, what happened, as much as information we know, and I think we are here to work together, not to look at the negative, but to look for the positive for the future of generation to come to seek education in this town. Thank you for allowing me to speak as out of East Brunswick, but I am here as American citizen and resident of New Jersey.
You come back anytime, sir. Next, name and address, please. Thank you.
Deborah Zidimer, 8 Francis Road. I'm, I'm here actually to speak about another issue, but I think in light of yesterday's disturbing incident at the high school, it's really important that the Board and Superintendent reassess the zero tolerance policy that's related to fighting, particularly when it relates to issues of bias and self-defense. And I stand in solidarity and support to all of us who are here tonight and those who are concerned about intolerance in our community. I'm here about the issues that are taking place at Hammershold High School. And the first thing I want to know is just ask if someone could clearly define for us why it's been decided that cycle should be cut, not eliminated. Everyone knows it is not being eliminated. We know that fact. But why is it being cut in favor of double math every other day?
I don't want to get involved in a conversation because we have-
There's no back and forth dialogue, ma'am.
No back and forth dialogue. So no answer, again, no transparency. Okay, so I'm just going to continue to ask my questions then, and I'll just wait for no answer. So I'm assuming, I think you said it was the, the words you used, that this was data-driven. The decision was data-driven. What are the implications for our students if, of this data? Are they not going to graduate high school? Are they not going to college? Are they not doing well on AP tests? No transparency, no answers. And, and again, what is the data? And are East Brunswick schools not recognized for their academic success? Are they not blue ribbon recognized? Are they not model school of the arts? Did East Brunswick High School not get recognized as one of the top schools in the United States from middle states? Did Nisch not give it an A for academics? Did the German department not win the AT, AATG, German Center of Excellence Award? Are 98.6% of East Brunswick High School students not graduating high school as compared to 90.9% in the state average? Are East Brunswick students not getting into colleges? 90.4% attend college as compared to the state average of 77.9%? Are East Brunswick students not taking AP courses? 42% of East Brunswick students are taking AP courses in comparison to the state average of 34.9%? I'll just answer my own questions. Are East Brunswick students not doing well on AP exams? The AP pass rate is in the 95th percentile as compared to the state average of 74 percentile. Are they not doing well on the SATs? The reading and writing average in East Brunswick is 606 compared to 542 in the state. The math average is 625 compared to 543 in the state. Are they not doing well on the ACTs? They're above average in every section of the ACT. Those are, I think, the academic issues that don't need to be addressed by doubling math every other day at Hammershold. Another issue I have with Hammershold, with the, the cut, is the fact that, that hasn't been addressed yet, is students that have to take study skills if they are classified or literacy den, which I'm not sure what literacy den is, but I'm assuming it's if students don't have-
Excuse me, one-minute timeline.
If they don't have a certain score on a certain test. I think that we really have to wonder if this is meeting legal standards of inclusion, if this is meeting the least restrictive environment for special education students. There is a right to participate in non-academic and extracurricular activities where children with disabilities are entitled to an equal opportunity, to, I'm sorry, let me clarify. Students that have to take study skills or literacy den do not have an option for an elective. Let me clarify what that is. So therefore, the only arts that they get will be a 50% cut to the cycle they had last year. And students with disabilities are entitled to an equal opportunity, to children without disabilities, to participate in non-academic school courses or special programs such as gym, art, music, home economics, vocational education, athletics, social, and recreational programs, and extracurricular activities, which are available within the Board District. So I think we really also have to, we really also have to check. I am finishing up my sentence.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to reserve my time to speak afterwards because I cut in line, but I just want to let the Board know there are several hundred people outside, and you guys knew that this was going to be a big turnout, and we're irresponsible in holding it in the same facility. So you should all walk outside, see the hundreds of people who have come out here to talk, and we're making them stand outside.
The meeting was advertised for this location publicly. We can't change a meeting location at the last minute without noticing. The Open Public Meeting Act requires at least 48 hours' advanced written published notice of the location of a meeting. So we have security here, we're letting people in as, as we can due to fire regulations, but we cannot change a meeting at the last minute. That would be a violation of the Open Public Meeting Act. So we're here this evening to hear comments, we'll stay as late as we need to, hear people's comments, and when people are done commenting, they can leave so that other people can come in and make comments.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Carrie Hennessy, 12 Delaware Drive. I called last week and asked you to change the venue of the meeting to accommodate the people that were coming. Nobody returned my phone call, and nothing was done about that. I don't want to leave. I don't want to leave after I comment because I would like to hear the other comments.
That's fine, you can stay. But I think your, your call was to change the venue dealing with the Hammershold, so
To change the venue of this meeting so that you could accommodate the people coming.
The Hammershold comments, yeah.
Yes.
And so people are going to comment, but the notice of the meeting was published in the papers, and it's published for this evening, and to, when you call to notify a paper to change the location requires more notice than that, to get it published in the paper.
Last-
So we're not able to cha- we're not able to change, ma'am, we're not able to change the location of the meeting. The meeting's taking, the meeting's taking place. It's got to be published at least adva- it's, excuse me. It's got to be published at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting. The, the issue that folks are here for today, there's two issues tonight. One of the issues- One of the issues arose yesterday, and so we're trying to accommodate two different groups of people here with the notice that's required of the Open Public Meeting Act, so long as we're complying with the Fire Marshal's request. That's why we're letting people in and out. If people want to stay, they're more than welcome to, and we're going to try to accommodate each and every person who wants to speak this evening.
I'm returning after the last board meeting with so many more questions, the biggest one being why. Why has the re-imaging of the cycle included a reduction in hours? Whatever words we choose to apply to this situation, the end result is a cut in arts education, particularly for special needs students who will see a decrease in their arts education availability because they need to take study skills or other special classes, and they don't get the opportunity to take an elective. It's wonderful that there are forty-two options of electives if you are able to take an elective. If EB students are above average for graduation rate, the statistic was ninety-eight point six percent compared to ninety point nine percent, why do we need to reduce the arts? If EB students are above average for attending college, why do we need to reduce the arts? If they're above average in taking AP courses, why do we need to reduce the arts? If EB students are above average in passing AP tests, ninety-five percentile compared to seventy-fourth percentile for the state, why do we need to reduce the arts? If EB students are above average in SAT scores, reading and writing is six oh six for EB, and the state average is five forty-two. For math, it's six twenty-five for EB, and the state average is five forty-three. So why do we need to reduce the arts? What data was used to determine that an increase in math hours would solve the as-yet-undefined issue? How does our superintendent, who obtained his doctorate from the University of Delaware, a land grant, sea grant, space grant, Carnegie Research University, turn to us and say there's local data and not produce any of that data for review? How does President Becker, whose candidate profile says she's part of the curriculum committee and that she strives to do what's best for the kids, consider such a cut in light of the outcry from the kids? Other board members whose profiles share things like, "I'd like to make sure all kids are represented, I'm happy to have the input of staff, students, parents, and community members," and three Cs of communication, cooperation, and compromise? How do they move forward with this proposed change that does none of these things? How do we hold a meeting with half the people out in the hall?
Hi, my name is Maha Eel Gergis. I live at 186 Ryersley.
Excuse me, can you repeat your name, please?
Maha Eel Gergis.
Vicki, can you hold on one second? If someone's a student, a minor, can we recommend them not give their address, just name what school they go to?
Students do not have to give their addresses if you're a student.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
With all due respect, Dr. Valeski, I don't think you know what you're talking about regarding what happened to the student. You weren't there, and I wasn't there, okay? So I can't say anything. I can't say, I can't speak for the student, the Muslim girl, and I can't speak against the other girl. But what I do know is that the other girl has gotten into six fights during her two years at our school, and you're saying that it's okay for her to return back to school after six fights? And you're not putting her in danger? Where's the integrity in that? Where's the integrity in saying that they were just fighting over a seat when the other girl is spitting in her face, spraying perfume on her, taking off her hijab? Where's the integrity? And how do we call ourselves a blue ribbon school when we let things like that happen and we let cheating get by? Cheating is rampant in our school, and we let something like that happen? Where's the integrity? Where, how do we prove that we're a blue ribbon school? We're not.
Hello, board, and thank you for giving me a platform to speak. My name is Samir Siddique, and I'm also a student at East Brunswick High School. In light of the event that's been happening recently, I know we're all in a really big sense of confusion of what's happened. I'm really saddened to know that one of my friends was actually involved in the fight, and it's not who the, and it wasn't the victim, and I cannot stand by her anymore. The actions that that person has committed against her with the perfume, with the spitting in her face, with disrespecting someone's religion to take off her hijab is, it's something that you just can't redeem yourself after. But what I also think is important, that as fellow, not only as Muslims, but as human beings, that we don't go out to seek revenge because that's not, that's not our way, that's not as a community. And I realize that that girl has been receiving death threats, like, not suicide, but like attacks that have been placed upon her. And sure, as much of, as much of the things that she's done, no one, like, as much as like the harassment that she's given to the other girl, no one deserves a wish like that. And especially if you're a parent to someone like that, a relative to someone like that, that really shouldn't be something that we should be doing, especially if they're like a student. They're very impressionable, they're young, and especially at a young age, they don't deserve this type of hatred. You cannot, you can't fight hate with more hate, that's just adding fuel to the fire. And I think that not only as a student community, that with us, like, manipulating the story, making it like spider webbing it into thirty different types of stories, causing even more confusion, that's very irresponsible of us, and I'm like, and I'm just happy that having a platform to say this. And I'm not defending her for her actions because of like, the vileness and the amount of like gratuity that was involved with that. It's, like I said, it's irredeemable. But I would also like to talk about the no tolerance policy that's also involved and what's happening with that. I know that it's kept in place to keep all students safe from each other, but at the same time, there has to be some type of justice that needs to be made because if, say, if someone was coming to attack you, you would have to obviously defend yourself rather than just take the hits. There are going to be more injuries made if you would rather just take the hits than fight back. So I would like to ask that question to the board, and I thank you for giving me a platform to tell you the story of all this.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarvath Malik Hassan. I'm a new resident of East Brunswick. I live at 184 Milltown Road.
Could you, excuse me, can you please repeat your name?
Sarvath Malik Hassan.
Thank you.
I moved to East Brunswick very recently, and I enjoy the day-off messages from the superintendent because it is a blue ribbon school district. We wanted to raise our children in diversity. People tell me, "Why don't you move to Texas?" Because there's so many Pakistanis in Dallas and Houston, but we chose to stay in a district where our children see every race, every color, and every religion. The incidents that happened last night, I can tell you everything that went wrong, but we actually want to address how do we go forward with tomorrow. I wanted to express that we really care about both the girls. Because while one is a victim, one is going to, if she has that hatred in her heart, it's going to carry with her. The next incident, she might not be a juvenile, and she might not be tried as a juvenile if it happens with a pen, with the stabbing of a pen. It doesn't have to be a gun in the school. So it is to protect her also because we are raising the next generation, and what we leave behind is what we do today, that's what will happen in the future. The Muslim community, obviously, I come to you as an East Brunswick resident, as a Jersey girl born and raised here, but also as a Muslim because that identity is with me whether I like it or I don't, and whether, whatever the political climate is right now in the country. We wanted to work with the school board for preventive care, so how do we stop this from happening? We can do metal detectors and everything, but that doesn't change the mindset, right? So we have to teach empathy to the kids who were recording the video and they were laughing, to how do we stand up for others? How do we not make a mockery out of the incident? But also to teach the kids that when you speak up, you will not be penalized for speaking up. Honestly, when I was seventeen and I said something, nobody believed me. Thanks God to video that someone would believe me. They were like, "Oh, she's a sixteen-year-old." Yeah, they make up stuff, right? So I don't know how we'll work around that, but we would like to be involved in helping to revamp that process. Another thing we want to do is we do want, we do want the board to reconsider the zero tolerance policy, especially when spitting at someone is an assault. So it is provoked. Thirdly, she is, I don't know if she's sixteen or seventeen, but she's going to be applying for college soon. If she's a good student, does this go on her record? Should it go on her record? You know, if my son was spat on and he, we would react, would I want him to be penalized for that? Or any one of our kids? Would you want your child to not be able to admit it to a school because they've responded to an assault? We know that the family might not be here, but we know why they're not here. You're scared. If it happened to my son, maybe I wouldn't speak up, and I would want others to speak up because you're scared for your child. And that trauma cannot be, you can't get over that in twenty-four hours, right? So that's why we're here, that's why we all should be here, speaking up for the family. Another thing that I wanted to address was, when we do go forward with these programs, we want not just counselors and people that have a title to fill to make programs that deal with bullying, but real people, parents, community members that are involved to come and say, "Hey, how do you deal with a hijab, for instance?" It is the dignity of a Muslim woman. It is her shirt. And when that is pulled, it's like she's bare. And I really, I'm not saying this out of the rhetoric. I would say this if someone's yarmulke was pulled off. I would say this if someone's habit was pulled off. I would say this if someone's shirt was pulled off, you know? Whether it be a boy or a girl, it doesn't matter.
One minute.
So I would like for the board to consider these things, not that, just, maybe we can have another meeting where everyone is there and everyone does feel, you know, that they were listened to and they were heard, and maybe we can take it upon us to put that in writing and have a larger venue where people can come and they can hear our concerns. We don't want East Brunswick to get a new reputation because media is present today, but we want media presence to be for better things. This is not the attention that we seek.
My name is Chavez Siddiqui, and as a high school student, I would just like to state what actually happened because I was there at the scene yesterday when the incident occurred. As I was passing by in the halls of EBHS-- as I was passing by in the halls of EBHS early in the morning, I actually heard the girl, she was shouting "Help" and "Stop," and nobody was helping, and I, and as I got closer, I witnessed a teacher actually pulling them apart, and I witnessed the Muslim girl on the floor, and she was just being senselessly beaten by the other girl. And when I saw this, I felt like it's unjust for both of them to receive punishment because the zero tolerance policy should definitely be reconsidered because just letting someone beat you and just waiting for that to happen is completely unjust. I mean, there's nothing really that she could have done, just sitting there, it will not get her to any solution. And as I, I saw her being spat on, I saw her being beaten, and the teacher was struggling, and I would just like to address that there, that no security guards were helping her, right? And even though there should be security guards posted in every section of the, of the school, especially in a hangout area such as the one next to the cafeteria, and I think it's, I think that the zero tolerance policy should be reconsidered.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Abada Hamad. I have lived at 9 Lanch Road for the last forty-three years. Three of my kids have gone through the East Brunswick High School and the education system. My oldest son, he graduated in nineteen eighty-three. My daughter, in nineteen eighty-five, she's a lawyer and worked for the Justice Department in New Jersey. And my son, youngest son, he also worked for the Justice Department and the, and the U.S. Department of Justice. I have, because of these three kids, I have been very closely associated with the educational system and East Brunswick High School, which I have so much admired. But this incident has really dismayed me and disgusted, and it's, what I, I only want to come and emphasize that this should be investigated and the party should be punished in exemplary manner because this is a larger part of the so-called Islamophobia, which is raising its head all over the country.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Lana Herman, and I'm a student at East Brunswick High School. I wanted to bring to the board, to bring up to the board two things. So the first thing is, well, both of which are in light of the recent incident at the high school. So as we all know, social media has played a huge part in feeding us information on what has happened very recently since none of us definitely know, or not all of us know what occurred, so there are many rumors and many different stories being spread around the school. So because we are also aware of that, I just don't understand why the school and the administrators and the school board, when they do send an email to us, make it so secretive and they make it so vague that they, that parents and people both in and out of town do not understand what went on or don't even have like the slightest idea of what really went on. I can't even say I know the full story one hundred percent until I heard that other person speak just moments ago. When we're all trying to struggle to find the truth, why is it that the people that were relying on to give us information don't give it to us? So that's the first thing I wanted to ask the board. The second thing I wanted to bring up was my friend, very recently, two months ago actually, faced a very, very similar situation. So my friend, two months ago, she was gay-bashed by a fellow classmate where she was targeted in both the locker room and parking lot for her sexuality. She came to the school for resolution and for support, but the school did nothing. Instead of resolving things, the person that stuck up for her was thrown out of his sports team that he was in. It's ridiculous. I know. This is reoccurring, and these kind of things are nothing new. So why does it take social media and publicity for things like this to finally be resolved or be brought to the awareness of the community? Because this isn't the first thing that something like this has happened.
Hello, my name is Nabi Ha Soharwadi. I'm a senior at East Brunswick High School, and I just wanted to say that although yesterday's incident was an extreme, it was not something that was totally irrelevant from what I've seen in school. I've been in East Brunswick since first grade, and it's not the first time that I've seen something like this. Although this was an extreme, it shouldn't have taken going this far to discuss and address an issue like this. In ninth grade alone, I suffered two, I went through two different instances where I was targeted for my religion, and I didn't really feel like I could go and talk to someone about it, first of all. And second of all, as I was leaving the Islamic Club meeting today, where the principal and the vice principals were there to discuss with us, I, I even, I saw then, people who were talking, as I was leaving the parking lot, people were talking about how they wanted to make up a statement to talk to the news or discuss whatever while also at the same time making crude remarks about the members of the Islamic Club. So I just, I think we need to address the underlying hate, the lies within our community. We shouldn't have to go to this far of an extreme to address these issues.
Good evening. My name is Abi Rashid. I am a junior at East Brunswick High School. And first of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Education for being transparent and allowing our public and the, the public of the East Brunswick community to come up and address the issues that have, that have recently been brought to light. And I don't think it's just an East Brunswick High School issue, but it's an issue of that the whole town be relevant and updated as to what is happening. Because regardless of whether it's someone who we know, it very well could be our own brother, it could be our own sister who is ending up brought up in unforeseen circumstance, and it is important we remain vigilant. One thing I'd like to mention is that we need to use this example to set a precedent and make sure that as a community, we continue to stand vigilant and we do not let this become a formality. It's been recorded in history that whenever there are certain minority groups who are targeted and clearly discriminated against, the dangerous fact is that they oftentimes will set into complacency. They won't want to react, they won't want to act against the majority. They won't want to react, they won't want to act against the majority because they know that it is a very tough fight. This attitude clearly breeds a backlog for people who are trying to stand up for their rights and in return does not lead to the progressive society in any shape or form. I would be very unwise to say that this issue is specific in nature because as previous people have mentioned, this is a threat and this is clearly something that has happened before. And it's not a matter of whether it be a Muslim person in this incident, whether it be a Sikh person in the future, a Hindu, any religious background, any sexual orientation, any ethnic background. It's a matter of being a respectful person. It's a matter of knowing that as humans, we live with each other and we are, we are, we are bound by this social contract that we participate in our society as we can come here, as well as the fact that we respect the guidelines and make sure no one is discriminated and no one is abused. So I'd just like to ask the Board of Education to really think about the events that have precipitated last, yesterday. The events that have precipitated throughout all of history and all of humankind. We cannot simply allow ourselves to be complacent and pass this off as a crime that was, as an incident that was specific in nature. We need to make sure that the protocol is effectively being followed and that people aren't being violated continuously. Our own founding fathers put it well, united we stand, divided we fall. In terms of evil circumstances, our only option is to remain united so that the end will justify the means and that the bad side will never prevail. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wee Sam Burjawi. 444 Old Stage Road, East Brunswick, New Jersey, 08816. Please feel free to send flowers and chocolates. Greetings, Mr. Valeski, respected board. Some of you I have seen unfortunately the last time was at the vigil for the New Zealand massacre. And unfortunately, we are here today, meeting once again. And with this, I have written a whole paragraph and essays about my true feelings. But many of that was already said. So with that, I want you to see, what are you here for? As elected officials, what do you represent? We have talked about the zero tolerance policy, which is unjust. By you board members allowing this to continue, whether you have written it yourselves or you allow it to exist, you are directly or indirectly promoting bullying in the school. You allow kids not to fight back to defend themselves. And then we wonder why we need to spend millions of dollars, of taxpayer dollars, on security measures, cameras, schools, metal detectors and such. If we just foster the right environment in the school, we won't need all of this. And this is upon all of you to act and to change this policy. We had talked about facts, Mr. Valeski, you were mentioning a bunch of facts. There are some facts that were not mentioned. And part of that is sweeping the problem under the rug. That is of discrimination. That is of discrimination and other hateful acts that are done in the school. And the school simply calms everyone down to make it seem less than what it is. We had a parent go to the principal yesterday of that school at 5:00 PM. The incident happened at 7:00 in the morning. When the parent asked the principal what happened, the parent said, oh, it was just a few, you know, teenagers fighting. They squared it off, we fixed the problem, everyone go home. Right? And obviously, that wasn't the case. He knew better, right? But guess what? It wasn't on social media immediately. Once it became on social media, then the school district wants to take action. You had, you had mentioned that this was immediately reported to the Middlesex prosecutor. I don't know which prosecutor was reported to, but when I called at 10:00 AM and I spoke with Agent Johnson, he said no one reported it yet and to follow up with him later in the day. So there are a lot of inconsistent facts that are going on. We are sweeping the problem under the rug. There was a child outside who was suspended because he videotaped this. The truth of the matter is, is that if he didn't videotape it, we would not be here today. It would have been swept, it would have been swept under the rug. I'm gonna commend this child and I'm gonna buy him an award and some dinner for doing that. Because if we don't teach our kids to stand up, who will? So I ask all of you to take action and to change these policies. I know some of you disagree with me because we want to be a blue ribbon school. And I pay tax dollars too, and this is why I moved to East Brunswick. But I don't want a phony blue ribbon that's actually a different color. I want my money's worth. And I want you guys to act in the responsibility of board members to make some serious changes so, for the betterment of our students and our staff. Because our staff are great, but they need training as well. They're not as diverse as they should be. Although they do a wonderful job, they need to represent each individual student in there. If you line up the students with the staff, you will see a complete disparage between them. Thank you.
Hello. Hello, my name is Kelsey. I'm an East Brunswick High School student. And I'm typically a very shy person, so for me to come up.
Just wanna wait till they close the door. Could you please close? I just want everyone to hear you. Okay, we need to close the door, please.
Well, they're trying to get people and you only have a limited amount of space because you didn't, with your 48-hour and what was it, seven-day rule?
Ma'am.
Ma'am.
Seven days. About Hammer Schulz, even if this was only about Hammer Schulz, you were given opportunity to find another space. You chose not to shame on you.
Can I please have the door closed so that we can let this young lady speak? Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Are you comfortable speaking?
Yeah.
Then go ahead.
I am, hello, thank you for that, by the way. I am an East Brunswick student and I'm like typically a very shy person and I won't like speak out unless I really feel that it needs to. And the incident that happened today, not today, sorry, my bad, yesterday, I know the person, like, I don't talk to her much, but she's not a person that would get into a fight. She's a very calm, mellow person who is very like kind. And for her to get in trouble and suspended because she was standing up for herself and standing up saying, because if she didn't stand up for herself, what would it be saying? It would be saying, oh, you could pick on people because of their religion. You could pick on people and you're not gonna get in trouble. Oh, I can't stand up for myself because I'm gonna get in trouble and suspended if someone spraying me with perfume, calling me racist things. But I can't go and stand up for myself and punch, not, oh, remember. But like, she, she displayed something that she was trying to do what she thought was right. So like, because why should someone get in trouble for something that they didn't start? They were just standing up for themselves and you're showing people that it's okay to be racist and it's okay to hurt someone and make them feel that they're alone in this world or going, oh, you're not like worth it or anything. But a lot of people feel this way. And for you to, for all you to be like, oh, it's okay, let her be suspended, let her do this. It doesn't matter that she stood up for herself. Okay, I'm sorry.
Take a breath, you did a really good job. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Helena Matar.
You've had about eight people leave in, you haven't allowed people to come in.
Ma'am, if you'd like to speak, we'd be happy to hear you. I just need you to come on.
I'm just sitting and watching.
I know, I understand, ma'am.
That's an observation, I think you should note that.
We under. Anyway, our next speaker, thank you.
Hello, my name is Helena Matar. I'm a junior at East Brunswick High School. And I know that we have a precedent, or at least in past fights in the school year. Students who have fought back in self-defense have not been suspended. And I don't understand why that's not being put in place here, especially because this is not an ordinary fight and it should not be treated as just another fight, just another two girls fighting over a seat, because that's not what it is. It's a hate crime. It's someone who was bashed and beaten and very like heinously treated because of her religion. I don't, I don't know why this is happening. And you guys, I, I feel like this is being treated as a normal situation and it's not and it shouldn't be treated as a normal situation. And as a person of color, and I'm sure other students who are students of color feel this way as well, if that has ever, if that ever, like God forbid, happened to me or another student, I would not feel like I need my school to protect me, I need my school to stand up for me. And if I am the victim, I'm not being treated like one if I'm being suspended, if I'm being, like, I need my school to be there for me. And if a teacher wasn't there to separate the fight, I don't know what would have happened. I don't know what would have happened to her. There was no security guards in, in sight. Like, I don't know what they were doing, checking IDs down the hallway when they should have been stopping the fight. Those whistles, use them. Like, like, I don't know what to tell you. Like, if that ever happens to me, that scares me. And I know that scares every person in this room because I feel like I'm not being protected. And in school, a place where I'm going to learn, a place where I'm going for an education. And that's not somewhere I should be scared to go.
Thank you. Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Sandy Nasser. I've been going to East Brunswick since I can remember. The hell, look at me, I'm a whole East Brunswick blob. I'd just like to address some things. I won't babble. I won't, I'm not trying to take all your time. The first thing I want to address is the zero tolerance. If it's a zero tolerance act and she has been in six fights, why is she allowed to return? It's a zero policy, not a six-chance policy. It's not six. It doesn't, it doesn't take six fights for us to notice that wow, this student needs to be educated on what she is doing. Second, the second thing I'd like to talk about is the security guards. Instead of asking me where my damn ID is or if I have a jewel on me, just ask me if I feel comfortable in my school. If I feel safe. I'm not Muslim and I don't know everything about your religion, but I can say that I am Coptic Orthodox. If my cross, my cross right here, was to be pulled or even if I was spat on first, I would not stand back. And I shouldn't be suspended for fighting back. I am fighting back to protect myself. I'm not here to yell at you, I'm not here to say, oh my God. And I know social media is bon out of proportion. But I also want to say, I told my mom about this incident yesterday, right when I found out. And my mom was scared. My mom was scared to send me to school the next day. And when she said that she received the email from you, Dr. Valeski, she was like, oh, you blew it out of proportion. But I am sorry, you were not there. I am sorry. I am so sorry you were not there. You don't attend this school. I'm a child, I'm a child that goes to East Brunswick High School. I go to class every single day. I am around it, I'm surrounded with fights every single day. But we allow them to come back. For you to suspend Hafza, I'm sorry for not naming any names, but Hafza was the Muslim girl. For you to suspend her, you're saying it's okay for bullying to be taken place? She was only defending herself. She is not hating on Jasmine, she was protecting herself. Hell, let's, let's all put ourselves in Hafza's position. If someone spat on you, would you let them keep spitting on you? If someone sprays you, would you let them, oh, 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 please, like shower me?
Ma'am, please stop. She's speaking. You've been interrupting everyone.
If someone, if someone were to spray you with perfume, say, hell, please, shower me with the perfume? No, because that's disrespectful and disgusting. For you, there's a very, very thin line that you can cross when you're having a fight. For you to come out of religion and take a hijab off, I don't know what the hijab means, I'm so sorry. But I do know that like if you show your hair, you believe that it's a sin, some of you, and you don't want to show your hair, that's a choice that they took. Don't we have freedom of speech, freedom of religion, freedom of everything? For her to cross that very fine line, to take her hijab off, you're just saying it's okay for suspending Hafza. I am sorry for babbling, I'm just that type of person. But I also want to say that we did our part. If you want to go outside, I don't think you saw everyone outside, you just came in like some people here. Like, it's flooded, you, there's no room to breathe. We did our part. Now it's your time to do your job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next.
Hi there, my name is Rachel Gervich. I'm a ninth grader at Churchill Junior High School. As a student in East Brunswick, upon hearing about the hate crime that occurred yesterday, I was extremely disturbed. To hear that someone let their extreme, their pure hatred progress to a point, sorry, to progress to a point where they addressed another student with Islamophobic slurs, physically assaulted them and even ripped off their hijab, I was, and even ripped off their hijab, is not only insulting but terrifying. While I completely understand that when dealing with minors, there are laws surrounding how much can be said, I believe in order to stop these events from occurring, the incident should have been dealt with differently. While I have never heard of a hate crime progressing to such an extreme in our community before, this is not an isolated act. I personally have spoken to the principal at my school, hearing the term Jew, my religion used as an insult. In the hallway, I constantly hear the term gay being slung around as though it is a curse word. This incident should not have resulted in the suspension of the victim. While this, while at this time it appeared to be a fight, this event can be used as an example to show hate has no home here in East Brunswick. Oftentimes, oftentimes, the people who share hate are in power because people are too afraid to address them. As the administration, you have the power to use your authority to address this hate before it progresses this far. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next. Oh, wait, okay, let, let's just give them, if you don't mind, if that's okay with you, give them a few seconds to get out. I just don't want to disrupt your talk. Is it okay with you if we wait for people to come in? You sure? Okay, thank you. Seats right up front. If anybody needs a seat, there's several seats right up front. And in the second row.
I'm sorry to throw up, but can you tell the security guards that it's okay to throw up these seats? Can more people come in?
I feel like the people that are gonna talk are probably gonna sit back down, that's why.
Okay. I promise you, everyone who wants to speak will, okay? No problem. Okay, thank you so much for being so patient. I just wanted everyone to have a chance to hear you.
Hi, my name is Zoya Jodri and I'm in eighth grade in Churchill Junior High School. I'm here to stand up for what's right because this incident that occurred truly disgusts me. The fact that Hafza was physically and verbally abused is uncalled for. This is my hometown and when incidents like this occur, it disturbs me, it disturbs you, and it disturbs the Muslim family. Calling names like Raghead and saying, at least I don't have to cover my hair to impress my parents is so, so horrible. I'm a Muslim girl and I do know wearing a job is a choice you make and a choice that Hafza made, to be modest. This choice she made got put against her and made her feel bad in the end for making that choice. I hope a change really does happen. I did talk to Hafza and she says, thank you for everyone who came to support her. And I just want you to know that she's a really sweet girl and she didn't deserve this.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Yisya Salim and I am a senior at East Brunswick High School. I am the current Muslim Student Association President, or MSA. And I want you guys to hear me out and the rest of the community. For the past couple of months, I was in and out of the principal's office in regards to my senior quote. Dr. Vanilla had talked to Dr. Valeski about my quote too. My quote was, so do you like speak Muslim? It was supposed to have a sense of humor to it. And just be relatable for many Muslims. It was denied due to cultural insensitivity. The reasoning was that, the reasoning was that it could offend. Others and that at East Brunswick High School, everyone must be protected. However, that care and protection, I really don't see right now. I don't see any of it right now. I woke up this morning contemplating to wear my hijab. It's a simple piece of cloth. Doesn't harm anybody in any way, shape, or form. You can buy this at any store that you want, Macy's, JCPenney, just go out, you can buy a scarf. The moment you put it around your neck, it's okay. The moment I put it up a little bit on top of my head, it turns out to be a problem. Hijab is a target. It makes me feel like I'm a target for racial bias and for religious intolerance. Being a Muslim in today's society, especially a woman wearing the hijab, there's always a fear in the back of your head. Going grocery shopping, walking around the mall, and doing any normal everyday activities are now places that I feel like my safety is in jeopardy. As unfortunate as it is, I'm used to it. But in school, I've never expected it. I walk into school to learn without being insulted in any way. My first experience with racism and religious intolerance was in ninth grade where I was called a terrorist. I notified Churchill Junior High School about it and it was brushed off. East Brunswick alumni, like high school alumni have reached out to me after I tweeted about this incident. And they talked to me about Islamophobia that they have experienced or seen at the school as well. Each alumni had something similar in their accounts. The administration had brushed it off and had swept it under the rug. I will not allow the school or town to push this under the rug and undermine this, neither will the hundreds of people. Neither will the hundreds of people standing outside right now. Me and the other exec board members of MSA are here. We are standing outside. We started doing speeches outside. We started off. With a prayer from the Quran and we started to talk about the incident that occurred. Because there's so many people outside, they want to talk, they want their voices heard. I held an MSA meeting today after school with the principals, the vice principal, and other authorities around us. All of us at the MSA meeting, which were Muslims and non-Muslims alike, we all made comments and expressed our feelings and asked questions in regards to this incident. The authorities stood there quiet throughout all of it. East Brunswick High School is said to be diverse. East Brunswick High School is said to be united, to be one, to have honor and integrity. East Brunswick loves this idea that they're diverse. They love to say that they're diverse. They take it with honor and pride. Why is it that the administration isn't addressing this appropriately? Why is the victim being punished? I hope you can understand and realize what you decided was not right and her suspension should not be on her records. I moved here from a very diverse city, Jersey City, and yeah, East Brunswick is not as diverse as Jersey City, but they do have diversity. And I think if you're gonna like be proud of your diversity and highlight it, then you have to actually take care of those people that create the diversity. I do not wish anything bad upon the attacker. I do not wish to even say her name. I only hope. That this incident can guide her towards a better and more tolerant mindset. We need to make change. We need to have the same protection that the principal told me that we had to have for the senior quote in the yearbook. We need to have that same protection that we had with that small senior quote to something as big as assault. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Hello.
I'm Anushka. I'm a sophomore at East Brunswick High School. I am a friend of the victim, right? I was there when the incident happened. Um, so this has been going on for two days, right? So it was me and my friend, the victim wasn't there at the time, right? So the perpetrator, she came and she harassed us. We are not hijabis, we are not Muslims. It is not Islamophobia if it is not against Muslims. We were harassed by her, um, simply for being brown, right? And, can you hear me? Alright, so, alright, so, um. This and Islamophobia that everyone's talking about, right, is clearly a case of racism. Right? It's not against one specific thing. It's just been in six fights before, why don't you think it's a problem? Right? And I mean, how do you get rid of this? Is there anything you're doing to make sure that this doesn't happen again? Because I don't see anything, right? It happened yesterday morning before school started. It took the school two full school days to address something like this, right? Today, the last period of school, we were told that there was a seating dispute between two students. Nothing about how bad it was, it would just, it started as a seating dispute, yes. But there was no mention of what actually happened the students need to know. Especially with all the social media rumors flying around, there's a lot of stuff happening, okay? If the rumors lead to another hate crime, maybe not against the Muslims this time. You're gonna be responsible for that. We need more action. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Hibbitul Mohammed. I am a junior at East Brunswick High School.
Thank you.
When I first heard about this, I was late to school by a couple of minutes, so to, I, I don't understand. How this could have happened in the morning or at all in general. And to see that the security guards, it took them a while to just come over and to, to stop the fight. We should have security guards at every single area, not just all clumped up at one area talking and chatting about nonsense. We should have them in the cafeteria at every exit. We shouldn't have them just standing checking IDs. Oh, you don't have your ID? Oh, you're sent to the main office. We should have one at, we have one at the gym door, we have one at the front entrance, we should have one at the cafeteria at all time. Or at least two at the cafeteria since there are two ways to leave out. This isn't the first time that a racial slur has been told by this, by this perpetrator or attacker, whatever you want to call her. She has worn a shirt that said the Columbine shooting was a, was a, a natural selection. She had multiple, one, multiple of her friends wear the shirt as well. She had called one of my friends a flat-faced, floss-eyed, and then to continue to curse at her. She had then yesterday called her, called Hafsa a rag-headed, cursed at her. And then said, at least my, my parents, at least I, I don't have to wear a hood for my parents to love me. Telling the, this is disgusting and disrespectful and it was done by an ignorant person. We, it took us, it took more than twenty-four hours for the school, for the, for superintendent, or for Dr. Valeski to. Send out an email saying, telling the parents about this, but it took literally less than twenty-four hours that night. The incident of the one-hit letter that was sent, that was posted by a student to be told by the parents. Every, the parents knew that night that the, that the, that the letter was put everywhere. Because that was drugs, that was everything. Don't get me wrong, drugs, it's, it's terrible and we should, we should inform the parents. But if something as racial as this was said, it should have been told by, told to the parents immediately that, that this incident has happened. We shouldn't wait until the next day, more than twenty-four hours later, to tell the parents. I told my mother and she was disgusted. She knows I was about to wear the hijab this year. I was so happy, I was ready, and to see an incident like this, it scares me. How am I gonna go to, to go to school and what happens if this girl comes back to school and rips off my hijab? It's terrible. It was done by an ignorant person. Ignorance is not bliss. People say ignorance is bliss. Ignorance is not bliss. Ignorance is a difference between not knowing right and wrong. Ignorance is telling the Muslim brother or sister that they do not belong. Ignorance is telling them. Ignorance is knowing that what you said isn't right, but still saying it to pick a fight with the person because you believe that you're right. It is the difference between me and you, me and the perpetrator, is that I want unity and they want destruction. They want to see that this is, that they want the person not to belong. They want to see them kicked out of the school for they, they did nothing wrong. Hafsa did nothing wrong. And to, you should have done an administrative leave. Administrative leave for her not to have it on her permanent record for doing nothing wrong. Having it on her permanent record and her about to graduate this year, that she has three days suspension, two days before she's about, two months before she's about to graduate is terrible. But we can't fight how everybody is fighting on social media, saying, fighting separately and cursing at each other. We have to fight as one. Because in order to, in order to rise above and show that we matter against ignorant people. We cannot steep to their level and hush student, students from talking. We have to rise above and stand as one and tell them that this is not right. We say that we are EB, we are one, but how can you, when we stand as one and try to voice our opinions and we are shut down. Every single time. We are told this is not allowed and what you're, what you're saying is yes, freedom of speech, but you can't say it. That's what I had to say.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Tarek Zamir. I live in, uh, East Brunswick and forty-one Deerfield and, uh. I have, uh, I have three boys that go to the school district, uh, in different, three different schools. Um, my wife is an assistant teacher in the district. I have, uh, been volunteering for, uh, various activities at the, at the schools, soccer and basketball. I'm a head coach. Uh, just last season, my team actually won the championship for Fast Break. Uh, we moved to East Brunswick in two thousand and five. Uh, we heard a lot of great stuff about the, about the town. Um, we heard that the, the schools were excellent. We heard that it was a very beautiful, diverse town. And we decided that we want to move here. Um, after moving and over the years, as with every, any parent here, they, uh, had a, we had a lot of interaction with the school. The school teachers, the administration, the staff, and, um. Uh, nothing but appreciation and, uh, you know, and praise for, for the hard work. And, uh, the, a lot of effort that has gone to it. So I think what we're not hearing today is probably the, uh, the other side, which is, you know, there's a lot of work that is behind the scenes to. Bring us to where we currently are today in terms of the, the Blue Rippen District and, and, uh, the prestige that this town has. Um, however, um, due to some obvious changes in our nation's narrative on diversity. Um, the, the, uh, believe it or not, but according to the FBI statistics, just in one year. The hate crimes in New Jersey have risen seventy-five percent. Seventy-five percent, just in one year, from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen. Um, and East Brunswick, I'm really sad to say, it's really sorry to say, but East Brunswick is number two on that list. In terms of the number of hate crimes based on religion and based on race. These are two separate statistics. The count, New, East Brunswick is number two. Um, what we saw yesterday was really a manifestation of that hate that's, that's boiling or that's festering. This trend will not go away if we punish one student because of expressing that hate, because it was in there. Right? So we need, as a community, and I'll, I'll refer to, uh, Mr. Mayor's, uh, letter that went out today. That as a community, we must stand united in our resolve to end such actions. I'll request the board to think hard because this is a big challenge. This is a very difficult challenge that you have to deal with. Uh, to think hard, what else we can do to prevent this intolerance. Education seminars, um, training, mandatory classes for the students, uh, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not here to vent or my anger or anything, but I am here to offer my support to the board. I am a, I'm, uh, I'm president of the New Jersey chapter of the Islamic Circle of North America. This is a grassroots national Muslim organization. And IKNA has qualified and trained, uh, resources to offer education and training on faith-based bullying. So I will share my, uh, card with the board. You can circulate it and feel free to reach out to me at any time. Um, one other thing I'd like to say before I conclude is that the first thing that I did when I heard these rumors was I approached the principal right there and then. So I, uh, left my job early. I went to the principal.
One minute, sir.
Uh, I'm sorry?
One minute.
Okay. Uh, I'll conclude before then. So I went, I approached Mr. Vanilla. And I sat down with him. He welcomed me. He asked me what I was there for and I expressed that, uh, you know, I've been hearing rumors. I didn't want to pay attention to them. I want to know what really happened. So he said, we're bound by some laws, so we cannot disclose so much. So I'll tell you generally what happened. There was a fight between two students. Which got, uh, there was an argument which got physical and we addressed it firmly. He did not, uh, inform me that it was further reported to the prosecutor's office. I'm not sure if it was reported after or not. But yesterday around five o'clock is when I met him. As a member of the community of Islamic Center of East Brunswick, uh, which I'm a member of. Uh, I would have appreciated, and I mentioned this to him, and I also mentioned that I'm part of IKNA. I would have appreciated a little more disclosure that we are doing whatever we can. And there's, the matter is still not resolved. We have escalated it to the prosecutor's office.
Time, sir.
Yes. I request that the board take confidence in, in, in involving the community.
Thank you so much. And thank you for giving us your card, sir. Next, please.
Thank you, board. How you doing? I'd like to, uh, thank an entire community here in support of the incident happened yesterday.
Sir, may I have your name, please?
My name is Sam Khan. I'm the chairman of the South Asian Community Outreach. I'm the president of the American Muslim Council.
Sir, would you like to, um, give people about twenty seconds just to come in and out, so everyone could hear what you have to say? Thank you so much. There's chairs over here. There's about four chairs over here. Folks right up here, if you're looking for chairs. Yeah, we have chairs right up here if you guys want to sit down. Thank you. Thank you so much for your patience, sir. Could you please continue?
Thank you. Uh, as so many speakers previously asked you guys that, uh, you said it was like a twenty-four hour notice and you can change the meeting, you can change. And the place where more people can, uh, sit. So is there any plan, then you can arrange another meeting, or this is specific important issue? Which is important for not for the, for you, for the people living in this, East Brunswick, where you be? And I, I, I saw Mr. Attorney, he just got irritated by someone is interrupting. This is the interrupting, the, the issue with the community, the entire community, whether you are a Muslim, whether you are Hindu or Sikh. As you know, the demographic of this entire district, Addison, East Brunswick, South Brunswick is changing now. And I rather, I rather urge you to when next time you vote and come out and elect a board member, you have to see the people. What, whether they are prejudiced or whether they are with the community. And all these people who are sitting here, if you guys come out and vote, so this should not happen. And this is your responsibility. You are elected officers. These all people sitting here, they voted for you. So you, you think it's not serious to, in twenty-four hours, then you can take notice of this issue? This is a serious situation and you know it's happening all over, but East Brunswick considered to be a good ci- good city. East Brunswick considers a good town where people are willing to move and grow a family here. This is your responsibility. It's not just because you ignore this. If you entrusted to grow this city, this is your duty to take care of this issue. As a chairman of the American Muslim Council, we can offer you, we have certain, uh, training programs. We have presentation and we go to school to school, we going in Addison, we different schools. We can show what is hijab is, what is, why they wearing a hijab. We can presentation do in each school, in each different high school. That's what we need to do. And we need to talk to certain, each principal, we should have a team of interfaith. We have interfaith leader. We should have interfaith kids representing Indian, representing Pakistani, representing Chinese. And they should go, they should have a club, interfaith club, which discuss the culture, discuss the faith, and they, they should not happen again. So once again, what happened here, this is not accepted by the community. But this, we not intended to punish anyone, but we need to do that. We need to educate. And most important duty is you to help the community. You know, you to send a message that you are not biased. Thank you very much.
Sir, sir, um, we are always very interested in hearing about programs. So if you call the board office tomorrow morning, they can get your contact information to me. I can share it with the board. You can send us information about your program. Or you can give it to us now. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir.
Hey, did you hear about the fight that just happened? What, what are you talking about?
May I have your name, please?
Rumsha Sayad.
Thank you.
This girl's hijab got snatched off. She, a girl sprayed perfume in her face and she was spat at. And that's the moment I realized, me, as a young Muslim woman, is not safe in my own high school. Years ago, my mom switched me from going to a private school to go to East Brunswick Public Schools because she said I'm going to learn much, a lot of things. It's going to grow me into somebody I'm gonna, it's going to make me someone really successful. Today, I am learning that if I fight back for my beliefs, I'm going to be suspended. If I wear a hijab, if I call myself a Muslim, I'm going to be attacked. Well, here is my hijab. Here is my hijab, pull it off, I dare you. Spit at me, I dare you. Because I will fight back and so will every single person in this room. They will fight back. And if they are going to sus, they are going to be suspended, then suspend everybody else in this room. And we will have zero tolerance for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
You've already spoken, so we're going to let other people speak. Thank you. That's how it works. Everybody gets an individual time. Ma'am, no, we don't, that's not the rule. So somebody else who hasn't spoken can come forward and speak. We have a lot of people, there's other people outside who want to speak. So we want to give everyone an opportunity to be heard.
Thank you, ladies, for understanding. We appreciate it. Next, please.
My name is Habem Gehez. I live off of 27 Christian Drive. So I came aware of the situation earlier this morning and it sounds like you need to revise your zero tolerance, tolerance policy. I mean, it doesn't seem fair and it doesn't sit right with me for someone to feel the need to defend themselves and to get suspended the next day. I have two little girls, they're in Chittick, and they are going to be going through middle school, junior high and high school. And I just want to make sure that I provide them and you all provide them with an environment where they feel safe and comfortable in their own skin. So I have a proposition. Let's be proactive about avoiding the next hate crime by allowing opportunities for education. Here's an opportunity for you all to consider. The month of Ramadan is coming up in less than a month. And I know that myself and several of my, my Muslim parent friends would be more than willing to come to the school and offer little talks about what Ramadan is about and what it means to the Muslim community. So I'd be happy to give you my contact information. And like I said, you're not alone. You have Muslim parents who are more than willing to help educate others.
Thank you so much for that very generous offer. Greatly appreciated. Please make sure we have your contact information. Thank you. Next, please.
Salaam alaikum. My name is Abdullah Muhammad. My name's Abdullah Muhammad. I'm an EBHS alum. I am ashamed that there's zero tolerance policy. I see Muslims every day walking into EBHS without having to worry about whether they can, whether they will be attacked or not. The event that had, this event has implemented where sisters want to take their hijabs off and brother wants to shave their beards off. Our prophet once said, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, patience is illumination. We've been patient and we will continue to be patient. But please reconsider. How long will it take for someone to open their eyes and see that there is hate? There is hate that's going on? I am part of the Muslim Student Association at Middlesex County College. I'm the communications coordinator. I'm the Student Government Association President at Middlesex County College. I'm a leadership, leader at Young Muslims Woodbridge and Princeton. And I always tell my brothers and tell my Ummah, don't worry, because this will never hit home. But it has. It's gotten out of control. It's gotten so out of control to the point where I don't know whether I can send my sister to school or not. And she was just speaking a couple, a few moments ago. I have a 17-year-old sister and I have a 12-year-old sister. Both go to E, East Brunswick Public School Systems. I went to East Brunswick. When, when will this stop? I remember when I was in sixth grade. I was in sixth grade and I remember this kid, he walked up to me, big guy, out of nowhere, snatched my head and started beating me off for no reason. And I was a victim of the zero tolerance policy. I was at home, at home for a month straight with a concussion. I wasn't allowed to do anything. I wasn't allowed to listen to radio, watch the TV, do anything. Because a man chose, or a kid chose, to walk up to me and beat me up. And then three days later, he was in school. Same concept is happening again. It's reoccurring. History is reoccurring again. And, and it's, it's a shame. It's a shame. I, I applaud that you guys are here and listening. I applaud Dr. Vanilla for spending the time with me and speaking about what's going on. But I, I, I urge you to please reconsider the zero tolerance policy. And East Brunswick is supposed to be a blue ribbon school. Does this girl deserve to be at a blue ribbon school? All of us have either worked hard to maintain our grades and stay in school or stayed in athletics and athletics. I myself was part of athletics at East Brunswick High School and I had my academics at the same time. And I, I see the sign, the sea, the banner that is outside of East Brunswick that says, we are one. We are one and the students are one. But the thing is, it looks like the administration is far from it. And you guys really need to reconsider to communicate with the students. Just because of something, something happens at this level does not mean that, okay, now it's time to talk to the students. I have Dr. Mark McCormick, the president of Middlesex County College, always with his students, no matter what. If he's in between meetings, he's always down with the students. And we're talking about a county college. We're talking about a county college. This is a high school where you're an alum and you're an alum for life. And your, your, your school is your pride. Your high school is your pride. We used to sing the alma mater on the way home from the bus. And now I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed. I look at my degree. I went home, looked at my diploma, really good. And I said, what did I do to deserve this? Is, should I still be proud of being an East Brunswick High School student or an alum? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm going to start off by saying that my two sisters.
Just need your name, please.
Oh, my name could by.
Can you repeat?
I'm going to start off by saying that my two.
Excuse me, could you repeat, please? I didn't hear you.
Your name.
I'm going to start off by saying that my two sisters inspired me to start hijab. When I first started hijab in ninth grade, I was nervous, but I was welcomed by everyone. I would match my outfit to my hijab every day, which was an innocent pleasure that I took our parthurken. I was special and I was different and Hafsa probably felt the same. But times were different then and now our hijab is seen as a bad thing. As a hijabi today, in this school, I am appalled at the actions the school has taken. If I was in that situation and was forced to fight back, no, defend myself, I now do not feel I have the protection of the school nor that it backs me. It easily could have been me. And if my hijab was pulled off, I would not know how to act. I would have felt humiliated and disgusted, even broken. I cannot begin to imagine what hurt I would have felt being told I am being suspended for getting beat up. To know that the victim, which could have been any hijabi who made the harmless decision to take that girl's seat, was punished and suspended is haunting. I feel I'm not safe in my own school any longer. With the policy, it's like the victims are made the perpetrators. Let's go to another topic. What happened to the girl's boyfriend that got in on the fight? He was not suspended. He was in school today and his racist actions, his racist actions were not addressed. And a few days ago, or a few months ago, a swatiska was found in J Hall, the physics hall. And when reported, no action was taken. It was swept under the rug. What kind of environment are we in? We have created a petition and almost 2,000 people have signed it. And we have a voice, but it's time for East Brunswick to hear it. That being said, the school tends to cover up its past mistakes and sweep them under the rug. I think the hateful things the girl said cannot possibly have been brought about just by a seat dispute. There was too much passion and hate filled in her words regarding the hijab. And to me, the hijab is a symbol of modesty and of respect. I wear it by choice. And when I started, it was the best decision I've ever made because I felt myself grow as a person and as a Muslim. And I feel empowered by my hijab. No one has the right to steal my symbol of modesty off my head. It is mine and it's a part of me. I'm not a raghead. I'm a proud Muslim. My faith is a part of me. And I'm frankly ashamed to be part of an environment like this. Our school was supposed to protect us, but where is the protection? After New Zealand and the multiple genocides happening in China, Rwanda, Palestine, the hatred has reached East Brunswick. That being said, I'm not afraid, but I'm angered. I will wear my hijab with pride because no one gets to take away the most important thing for me.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please. Good evening, everyone. Would you like, would you like to give them a few minutes?
Sure, no problem.
We could have your undivided. Thank you. I don't know if everybody standing in the back is online or if you don't think there are seats. If you're just standing, there are seats up here. Okay. Would you like to continue? Thank you very much for your patience.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out and support or just to have a.
Your name, please.
Productive discussion. My name is Nancy Elbasti. I am a pediatrician and a resident of East Brunswick. I have three kids, ages eight, six and three. The two eldest are in Central Elementary School. We moved to East Brunswick in July of 2018 specifically for the school and also for the diversity. I lived in Homedale prior to that. You know, I grew up in Homedale, I should say. And so Monmouth and Middlesex County are very dear to my heart. Even though I can personally relate to the victim as someone who donned the hijab as a high schooler myself, I want to speak about the perpetrator. She is a child and possibly someone with mental health issues and she should be dealt with as such. This is not something that should mark her for her life. We as a community should study the deficiencies. We as a community should study the deficiencies that led her to act this way and lend, lend a helping hand where we can because it truly takes a village. As for the victim, I would like to request that her suspension be dealt with in a different manner. Such that it does not stay on her record. She will have enough to deal with physically and mentally. Zero tolerance should not be implemented when it comes to self-defense during a hate crime. Also, as for the young man who videotaped the incident and has been suspended, I'm not sure if there are rules again, in the high school against having a cell phone while in school. However, his suspension should also be expunged. Students should not be penalized in this manner for doing what's right. It sends the wrong message. Like I said, it takes a village. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, guests. Good evening, board. My name is Mohammed Brijawi. I'm actually a concerned citizen who have friends and family that actually live directly in East Brunswick. To be honest with you, I didn't have anything written today. I didn't think I needed anything to be written in order to express my compassion to both sides of the parties. This is something that's unfortunate for both sides of the aisle. Because I don't, I, I think I respectfully speak for anyone, regardless if you're a Muslim, Muslim, a Christian, a Jew, a Hindu, which you've heard in the past from other, you know, guests, that this is something that's going to touch every family member. Because I know, since I'm an uncle of eight, I have nieces and nephews that go to East Brunswick, middle school and high school. You know, it hurts me to know that my seven-year-old or my four-year-old might get hurt because she expresses her religious values. Now, I have a lot of Jewish friends. I have a lot of Indian friends, Pakistani friends, Christians. And, you know, I never had to fear or never had to, you know, dim who I am. And to see that this is occurring directly to my family members and my friends, it only makes me realize that we live in a pretty ignorant society and that, that the ignorance is the cause of our lack of knowledge and understanding where we come from. At the end of the day, I love pasta. I'm sure some of you guys love pasta. I love pizza and, you know, things like that. And I think there's more similarities that we, we have than differences. However, those little differences that, you know, most of us are expressing negatively is causing that to overshadow the positive. And with that being said, you know, I ask everybody to, you know, have both the parties in your prayers. And at the same time, I ask the board to think about if this was your kid, if this was your child or niece or uncle or whatever the case is, or nephew. And, and would you allow this to go away, to go the way you guys are carrying it on? Because as a, as a duty, as elected members, as you heard in the past with other guests, you guys have a job. And, and, and the fact that you held that position, you promised to hold it with integrity and professionalism. And I come from an old school era where your word is your bond. And on top of that, you have to express it with action or else what it is, is just words. And therefore, how can we take you seriously if you're not accommodating your words with actions? And for, for those and everyone else, you know, you know, and again, I didn't come here as a Muslim. I actually came here as a person that cares about humanity and race. And that's the God honest truth. It's because at the end of the day, I could sit across a brother who's a Christian or a Catholic or Jew and actually have a conversation with them without actually wanting to hit that person. So for that sister who got beaten up, I said, keep your head high. Don't worry about it because even the best get tested. Even, even the ones who came with, with messages get tested. And, you know, and, and, and with that being said, you know, the greatest always fall as far as, you know, they get taken away early. But at the end of the day, truth would always prevail. Racism has no existence in this country and especially in this town. So as a concerned citizen, I ask everyone and I ask the board to set aside your bias or, or set aside, you know, way you may feel, but look at the big picture and find a solution where everyone can come together and, and we can all look at each other as brothers and sisters and at the same time accommodate what is right. Stop throwing things underneath the rug. You know, it's better to deal with the skeletons up in the front. So this way you can nip it right away and so it doesn't create an avalanche and we don't look at, look at you guys as the bad guys and look at you guys as, oh, here we are again. Because I know there's each one of you here that have good hearts. And I know there's every one of you here on this board that are wanting to help the people. But I ask you collectively, let's work together. And I thank you for your time. I thank the guests, I thank the board, and I hope we can come again. And next time we are here, it's to celebrate how the pizzas and pastas and the biryani is all good.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hi, salaam alaikum. My name is Mashuud Siddiqui. And I'll be brief and direct in respect to the other speakers. So I'm East Brunswick resident for the past eight years. And I have four kids going to East Brunswick School. Definitely, I'm a concerned parent. And I also represent the East Brunswick Islamic Center here as well. So I'll be very direct here and brief. First of all, what's your zero tolerance policy? If we see a perpetrator on a sixth assault and is still being in the office and in the, in the school, what that zero toler, tolerance policy really means? And what message does that convey to the students? Secondly, what's the definition of self-defense? Why we see a girl here, a victim, in her self-defense? When she was defending herself, she was suspended for three days. So this should be revisited by the board. I urge that a self-defense policy should be revisited and shall be conveyed to the students as well. And the third one is, how are these policies? And I, I have this handbook, the student, East Brunswick High School Student Parent Handbook. How are these policies conveyed to the students? I have a nine-year-old, a ninth grader's son. I, I spoke to him, I said, do you know about these policies? I said, no, I don't know if they even exist. I'm sure most of students are like that. So what are the procedures that, that make sure that these policies are conveyed and these students are educated with these policies? Would appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. If you wouldn't mind, ma'am, maybe we'll just give it a few seconds for, for exchange? Thank you so much for your patience. If you want to let some, some people in, Paul, we have quite a few seats. Thank you. Few more, yeah? Right up front, ladies, if you need seats? Thank you so much for your patience.
My name is Noreen Ikbal and I live on Connolly Drive in East Brunswick. So I've been a resident of East Brunswick for the past 15 years. I used to live in North Jersey and then after Rutgers, I came to East Brunswick. I have three children who attend the high school, junior high and elementary school. And a few years ago, when we were looking for a home, we were living on the other side of East Brunswick. And when we looked for a home, we looked for two years to stay in East Brunswick. Because I told my husband, I'm like, if we go south, there's going to be no diversity. If we go to like Freehold, Manal, and we could have gotten, listen, for the taxes that we pay, we could have lived in a much nicer house. But I decided to stay in East Brunswick because I was like, you know what? You know, my kids will be, we're good in East Brunswick, right? Because of the diversity and I believe in East Brunswick. I love East Brunswick. A couple of years ago, I'm a therapist in town. I was looking for, you know, where to settle my business. I bought in East Brunswick again, right? Collectively, all of us, we do a lot for East Brunswick. Every new construction community, we own most of them, right? We pay a lot in taxes. So the thing is, are you guys going to return that love to us? What are you going to do, right? Because essentially, if we don't feel safe in this town, then we have to go. And we're going to have to choose a town that does make us feel safe. Because honestly, listen, I get it that what happened. Look, I think that a lot of mistakes were made, but that was, you know, Look, I think that a lot of mistakes were made, but that was, you know, hindsight is 2020, right? I get that. But now what, right? I mean, she shouldn't have been suspended. How are you gonna be beat on, right? And then not being able to protect yourself, right? So I just kind of feel like it was an injustice that occurred against her. And honestly, I'm here because I feel like, when I look at her, I think of myself. I was born and raised here. And, you know, my parents, they probably couldn't have advocated for me like that, right? But we could advocate for her, right? And we're gonna advocate for her, or else we all have to leave, right? If our children aren't safe here, we have to take our taxes, we have to take our homes, and we have to go elsewhere. You know, and honestly, we do a lot for East Brunswick. And I would hope that you guys would really consider that, you know, to do that in return for us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, please.
All right. Hi, my name, sorry. Hi, my name's Ikra, and I actually graduated from East Brunswick High School last year. And I just want to talk about how it is, like, how I feel personally, being a hijabi, so that there somewhat, you could feel some sort of release, relation, or whatever. You could like understand a perspective of it. So being a hijabi in today's society is scary. And what's scary about it is that in the world we live in now, it almost feels as if I am wearing a target on my head. And I have only been a hijabi for almost a year now. And within that time, I have never felt so afraid out in public alone. And I've never felt that way when I didn't wear a hijab. With all the shootings and hatred against Muslims, I feel more paranoid and anxious when I am out in public with my hijab on. Especially when a person looks at me, even for a second. The questions start running through my mind. Is this person going to attack me? Are they gonna shoot me? Are they gonna say some slurs to me? Are they judging me? Do they hate me? All of it starts running through my mind. And there are times when I dorm at NJIT. So when I am on the train ride back home, I bring my little mini suitcase with me because I'm bringing my dirty laundry home, okay? And I'm bringing it back with me. And when people look at me, automatically, my mind goes to the fact that they might be thinking that I'm carrying a weapon or a bomb in there. Even though I know myself, I have nothing like that in there. But I get so anxious, and I tell myself to just act like nothing's wrong. Like, just act like I'm normal and try to not seem as suspicious, even though I know I literally have nothing in there. Without my hijab, I had never felt that paranoia or anxiety, because no one could identify whether I was a Muslim or not. Nobody should ever have to feel that hiding who they are and not expressing their religious beliefs is the safer route here in America in 2019. It's unfortunate that we live in a world where identifying as a peaceful religion can make you feel like your life is more at risk. I love wearing the hijab, and I'm not trying to talk negative about it. I'm simply trying to get the point across that all of this Islamophobia and hatred fueled against Muslims has made many Muslims feel unsafe, to the point where, like this situation, kids and teens cannot even feel safe in schools anymore. And we, as a community and as a society, need to work together to reduce and ultimately end Islamophobia. Nobody in any religion should ever feel that their life is in danger by expressing their identity and beliefs.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to ask you if you also wouldn't mind just giving people a chance to get settled? Folks, if anyone is looking to sit, there are seats right up here. Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, no problem. So my name is Amar Moishthak, and that was actually my sister who just spoke. She's a hijabi. And I'm actually an EBHS alum and a business analyst by profession. I was actually coming home from work and picking her up yesterday. And she was telling me about this incident and expressing the way it made her feel. And if she is expressing the way it makes her feel being a hijabi, I'm sure there are many other hijabis that feel that way and others who feel like they need to defend their identity, they need to defend their beliefs. This year, I spent my time giving back to my community and creating programs for women and youth within my demographic to have open dialogue between different cultures and generations. Because I truly believe that having open dialogue and forums are important within a multicultural society. And that that's not just enough. Following up on these issues and creating and putting in place plans that address these issues is also really important to make an impact. As an East Brunswick resident and EBHS alum, I want to provide my insight and the insight of many other young, bright individuals, those who have graduated from East Brunswick High School, those who are students of East Brunswick High School, who are very bright, to help, you know, the Board of Ed. If there is a program in East Brunswick, to build programs that promote open dialogue, that promote conversations about different cultures, about different faiths. There are many, many bright, one of us that wants to do things, and these are preventative ways of preventing these type of incidents to occur.
Thank you so much. Then again, if anybody who's standing is not waiting to speak there and would like to sit, there are seats right up here. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Good evening. Salaam alaikum to my brothers and sisters in this room.
I'm sorry, your name, please?
My name is Eric Munoz.
Thank you.
I'm a concerned citizen. The reason being is because I am a Muslim in the state of New Jersey. A lot of the individuals you spoke to today, some of them were my students in Islamic Weekend School. Some of them I pray with within the community. Some of them I work with. Some of them I went to school with in the universities. I'm appalled at what I saw this afternoon on my social media. I didn't have to see it. And honestly, I'm not even shocked. I'm angry. I'm not upset, and I'm not surprised. And you shouldn't be either. The education given by a predominantly Anglo-Saxon school has led many within this state to pull out racist agendas, pulverizing our community with threats and violent attacks justifying it as normal behavior. Or as these students find it, according to the video, entertaining and laughable. Because you find the two students recording this laughing. I don't know what's funny about this. None of it is funny. And that's why we're here today. Because literally, what I saw was someone who did not even fight back, did not even put a hand on somebody else, was not even self-defending themselves. What type of value is that that we're teaching our kids today? I went to the public schools within this state. My administration was able to handle this. Why is it that two people, the actual person who did the attack and then the person who did nothing, get the same sentencing? I want you to know my personal email. M U N O Z M A I L at yahoo dot com. Because these are questions. And I want you to answer them personally from each and every single person that's in this board. What is zero tolerance? Does that mean no one can defend oneself from hate, evil, or racism, or bigotry in your safe environment that you call upon? Because apparently, what we have here, this is what it is. We have an example of white students showing their true colors against colors and anything that isn't them. The Muslim girl is still suspended. What are we going to do to reevaluate this decision? Because if nothing is done, and no one wants to view the actual preposterous notion that our kids are being governed by apathetic people who care more about their salaries than the issues at hand when it comes to highness matters and such, then maybe, just maybe, we need to reconsider the board and the people who are voted in this board, who are administering the laws within this city, and let everyone in the community know that young men and women should learn how to defend themselves and not let anyone stop them, no matter what the consequences are. Because I promise you, your jobs are in jeopardy today. These people, and again, I'm not even living here. These people are really reconsidering voting for you again. I would feel just a little bit shaken by that. I don't know what living you do after this. I don't know whether you have a family or not. But, Ms. Becker, you had mentioned something. You needed some type of outreach so that we could educate your community about our community, Islam, religion. I understand we have a notion that it should be state, separate from religion. But we have organizations within our community.
One minute, sir.
All right, that's all I need. Because I work with an organization called Y Islam. We teach people about Islam. And if you believe truly that this is just one incident where someone just expressed their notion of hate, trust me. I've been in Melon Mall, I've been in Woodbridge Mall, I've been in Jersey Gardens. Adults do this. Adults do this. So I'm giving this board the opportunity to listen to somebody, hopefully, the gentleman behind me, who actually runs this. So that way, you can get some ideas in regards to how to implement this. Maybe he could come to your school, to your elementary school, to your high schools, whatever it may be. So that way, there is some type of education. Because honestly, if this one particular girl wasn't able to learn about peace within our society...
Time, sir. Time.
Then someone was able to do it.
Mohammed Asif Berlas. Salaam alaikum. Peace be upon all of you. I never got to use my name as Mohammed when I came to this country. I was 16. That was about 20 years ago in Piscataway High School. I did not use it because I did not want to get picked on. I did not want to get mocked, I did not want to get joked about, and I was still joked about. If it wasn't being a Muslim, it was about your appearance, it was about something else, and they would call you whatever. And sadly, sadly, I was told not to get emotional, not to get enraged, which is what I feel, which I really feel towards each one of the teachers that did not do anything, that did not do anything at all. I still carry this in my heart. 20 years ago, I was suspended just like this, okay? Over the zero tolerance policy. Because somebody attacked me, and I was involved in the incident. I did not even put a hand up. I did not have this ability to speak. My parents did not want to speak for me because our community does not have the mouth. We're not taught to talk to the authority. We're not. This is just the way we are. It's unfortunate. And here, if you saw, you saw almost no parents. Almost. And the parents that you did see, unfortunately, they were students themselves. They know that their kids are going through that. So as someone who has gone through this, the psychological effects of this, not just that, the lesson that we're teaching to the kids, right? This is heavy. And like my brother said, this is what we are building. We're building society with biases, with prejudices. So we could definitely know that this is a no-brainer, that the zero tolerance policy needs to really be removed, right? That's a no-brainer. And secondly, I want to ask, I mean, the question is, the problem is clear, and the solution is there. Solution is obviously education. Education about the right things to the right people, right? And in the right setting. I work with Y Islam, and I also work with a masjid as well and a mosque. I'm an outreach coordinator. We do several types of training, especially for the teachers, especially for the students. These are general presentations and so forth. I want to know, who can I speak to and who can I reach out with the list of programs that we offer? Who would that be? No, this would be covered through the organization.
Sir? There's a lady in the back corner of glasses.
So I'll be reaching back to her.
Would you give your information to her?
Definitely. I'm gonna definitely reach. So just a question, I mean, do we want to perpetuate this? Do we really want to go ahead and shove it under the carpet? I don't think so. I really do believe that you're here taking away your time from your regular family, and you're here to make a difference. Not just to appease people, not just to make people feel like you're there, but because you actually care. Because I know it takes a lot to educate people. So may God bless you all, and thank you for allowing us to have this chance.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Haia Rabani. So I moved to East Brunswick in third grade. Before East Brunswick, I lived in Saraville, and I got bullied. I wasn't happy to be myself. I was scared because people didn't like me. I come to East Brunswick, I see Hammerhill, I see Churchill. It's super diverse. People are accepted for who they are. Everyone's happy, you know? The LGBT, there's clubs, and there's Awareness Day of Silence. Until yesterday, you know, I felt safe. And then yesterday, I hear a Muslim girl, you know, as a Muslim girl myself, I felt, you know, hurt. I felt completely ashamed to be here and to know that someone would do this, this innocent girl for not, you know, for being herself. The fact that this girl that has assaulted this Muslim girl is coming back in nine days makes me feel extremely unsafe. And everyone here, and even waiting in the hall or even our school, they're all feeling unsafe. And the fact that Muslim girl who hasn't even, you know, touched the other one is suspended as well is extremely unfair to her and all of us. I think it shouldn't be on record, and she shouldn't have been suspended in the first place. And this girl that has assaulted her should be expelled.
Thank you very much. Next, please. Your name, please?
I'm Hadra Salman. I'm an 11th grader at EBHS. When I walked into school two days ago, or when the event happened, I was shocked. Before then, I thought that EBHS and East Brunswick schools in general were a place safe for the Muslim community. I wasn't, even though I don't wear the hijab, I was never afraid to say that I was Muslim. So when I saw this, you know, this outright violence against someone for just, you know, wearing the hijab, that was honestly heartbreaking for me. Yesterday, I heard stories about girls whose parents, who wear the hijab, their parents begging them not to wear their hijab to come to school, not to come to school. And I feel like, sorry, EBHS is a place of learning. That should never come into play. Sorry. I feel as though, I understand that the zero tolerance policy is in place to prevent escalation of such, you know, altercations that are physical. But in the case of someone who's defending themselves, that should never apply. I think that this policy, it is, I guess it makes sense in some cases, but in other cases, it shouldn't always. It's not a one-size-fits-all policy. It should be based on each individual situation. It shouldn't just be, you know, applied for all situations in general.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Is there anybody else out in the hall who would want to come in? We're okay? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Please proceed.
Good evening and Salaam alaikum to my brothers and sisters. My name is Samya Siddiqui, and I'm a student at East Brunswick High School. It's outrageous to me that this school system can respond to issues of vaping and dress codes much faster than the issue of a hate crime against a Muslim girl. I understand that it takes time to process an issue such as this. But when issues such as vaping occurred, it only took until that night to respond to that issue. That we could have responded to this issue faster, and then these lies that were posted on social media about what happened, and this confusion, and this fear, and this paranoia could not have happened. It's outrageous that as we're standing here tonight, a Muslim girl is sitting at home suspended for defending herself. As Muslims, we want to stand up for ourselves. We want to defend ourselves. We shouldn't have to be punished for that. There's not a one-size-fits-all policy to bullying. We shouldn't act like there's one zero-tolerance policy that applies to all types of bullying. There's a hate crime that's put in place, so it should be addressed separately. The fact that, the fact that this girl is going to return, as my friend said, makes us all very afraid, whether we're Muslim or not. And I find it outrageous that as these white students are picking on people of color and Muslims, we're sitting idly by, we're letting them just have the same punishment as someone who committed another crime. This is no regular type of crime. This is Islamophobia, and this is racism, and it should be dealt with as such. Thank you.
Thank you. Your name for the record, please, sir.
Hi, my name is Shazad, and I'm Lori's neighbor right over there.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm Lori's neighbor.
I have a friend.
Sir, excuse me, your name again, please?
Shazad Shakir.
Okay, so what's it called? Peace be upon everybody. So I think everyone's on the same page here, the zero tolerance policy needs to be revised. Today, a Muslim girl was assaulted, tomorrow, it could be anyone, it could be Christian, it could be Jewish, it could be Hindu, it could be gay. Like, the only zero tolerance policy we should have here is zero tolerance on discrimination. Personally, I went to Raridan High School, which is in Hazlet, and being the only Muslim guy in that school, I got harassed a lot. But you know what? I always was able to count on the administration, my principal, my teachers, to step in there and fix the situation. Sometimes other people got suspended for harassment, sometimes I even had incidents where people were like, "Hey, I know you don't drink alcohol, but I'm gonna go get drunk and beat you up after school." I heard stuff like this all the time. But you know what? People like that got suspended. And I just want people in East Brunswick to have that same level of protection that I did when I was going to high school. As for the instigator of the tech, I heard this is her fifth fight. Sixth? But I'm just hoping that our school has some sort of program, or if they don't have the type of program to help somebody like this. When the person leaves high school, they're gonna probably end up behind bars, and we don't want to see that happen. So if there's anything we could do to help this child, so this doesn't become a reoccurring issue with the child, I mean, that's what we really want for all our students. So that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Mary Lynn Harrington, and I'm an East Brunswick resident, and I love living in East Brunswick. It's a great community. We have a diverse community, and we have a lot of great programs. Our libraries are exceptional, our schools are exceptional. And I'm sure that each one of you want to do your job well, because you care. Because if you didn't care, you wouldn't be here. So I know you care. And I could talk about how this is a hate crime, and how obvious it is, but I had many brothers and sisters that has already done that more eloquently than I could state. What I want to talk about is, you've seen enough of us come through here and talk. You didn't see the hundreds of people that didn't get in here, that we waited for hours, hours in a hot-hall bag. I have a heart condition, I waited for hours, because this was that important. It was that important to me, that a young girl defends herself, and you throw it under zero policy tolerance? I know you didn't come up with zero tolerance. I know it's something that goes all around. It's a blanket statement that you don't have to figure out the details of what is actually wrong with the situation, and both of them just get suspended or whatever. And the fact that somebody couldn't defend herself, and she still gets suspended? It's horrendous, in my opinion. And I think if you don't do something to reverse this, you're doing a very misjustice to all of our children in these schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, next, please.
Good evening and Salaam alaikum. So I've been living in East Brunswick for about ten years.
Sure, your name, please.
Humayun Khan.
Thank you.
Listening to Victor, is Dr. Victor here? Listening to Dr. Victor Veloski's very entertaining email, voicemail messages. But, you know, the only reason I moved into East Brunswick, and I'm not gonna say what town I came from, was for the education system. That was the only reason, okay? Because I heard that it was at a higher level than other places, and I wanted a nice, safe place, a safe environment for my children. So I'm very disappointed with what's happening today, because, you know, I was born and brought up in England, and in the seventies, when I went to school, the word was "paky." Excuse me if anyone gets offended by that. And basically, it became a normal word, so much so that even teachers would say it without any offense. It's very offensive, okay? And now, some of the words that are being said today, from what I've read, you know, are much more offensive than that. What I'm trying to say is that I'm very, very disappointed that this kind of thing happens in a town in like East Brunswick in the year 2019. I think there should be a wake-up call to the board to make sure that this kind of thing doesn't happen again, one way or another. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good evening, Mark Person. Salaam alaikum, wa alaikum tulah, wa barakatuh. May the peace and blessings of God be with you. First off, I'd like to say that I myself am a revert, a convert to Islam. I was not born in Islam. I converted about a year and a half, almost two years ago, into Islam. And I have found the greatest peace and blessings of my entire life in Islam. In every aspect of my life, in every aspect that the way I live, and with the relationships of every person that I have been in contact, and everyone who I have come in contact with. It is incredibly hard on my heart to see an act of violence like this. This is an act of terrorism. This is how Columbine, this is how Newtown, this is how New Zealand, this is where they began. Incidents like these, that started off small, this is a warning. This is a warning to you. I don't want to see East Brunswick become the headline news for the international news, because we've had a mass shooting in our school, because a student thought it was great what she did, and posted online saying, "Hey, look, I ripped this girl's hijab off, yeah, go me." I don't want to see this turn into that girl coming into school with a handbag full of guns, and start killing all of our students in our school. Because that is exactly what is happening next. This is a big red flag. This is a warning. This is the first step that happened, this is the first stage, this is a warning. This is where it starts. And if it doesn't get addressed right, and if the rest of the school is not properly educated, we are going to be the next mass casualty school in this country. This is a huge warning. Please, I ask you, please, for the love of God, look at our children. Their future, they are everything to us. Think about your own children, your own daughter, your own son. How would you, how would you be responding to them? How would you be able to look your own daughter, your own son? How would you look them in the eye, seeing somebody ripped their clothes right off of their head? She was robbed, she was taken, her dignity, her very dignity, the essence of everything that she has, was ripped off of her. She was left, she may as well have been stark naked. She may as well have her clothes ripped off and been stark naked in front of that entire class. How would you look at your own daughter, your own son, knowing that they feel like they've been violated? That they've been thrown as nothing? How would you look them in the eye? How would you respond to them as a mother or a father? I want you to think about that. I want you to think, I want you to think about, would you tell your daughter, "They were violated in this way"? Yes, you deserve to be suspended. I know you didn't do anything, you deserve to be suspended. How can you say that to your own daughter, who has just been violated? How? How could you do that? It's not right. Yes, there need to be rules, there need to be guidelines, but they are guidelines. They're, they're what you need to follow. They do not have to be exactly to a letter, to the T, "Okay, it says suspended, you're suspended." No, they're guidelines. There's room to be able to deviate left and right of those.
Sir, one minute, one minute.
Please, I ask this board. East Brunswick has an incredible reputation for its academics, for its cultural services, for its members, for the community, for its services, for everything that it does. That is why everybody comes to East Brunswick. It is the greatest town in this entire state, any one of us can live. And I don't want to see this one incident take down this entire, entire community. I don't want to see that, because it is the most wonderful and blessed community in this entire state. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next, please. Name and record, name for the record.
My name is Peter McCormick. Salaam alaikum to everyone here. So I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I waited in line for long enough, so here I am. I've lived in East Brunswick since 2005. I have a daughter who just transferred from an Islamic school to East Brunswick. So she's in ninth grade now, and she'll be in high school next year. So I have to say, I am worried about her, and her safety, and what the environment is gonna be like for her. And, I mean, I pretty much agree with what everyone else has already said here, so I do think that something needs to be done about the, we need to help the victim, and help her, you know, recover from this incident. And also, I think we need to help the aggressor, because obviously, there's something going on there, you know? Whether it's a family issue, or, you know, society, I don't know, but obviously, she's not getting the help that she needs. And she's definitely headed in the wrong direction, and, you know. So I just want to know, what are we gonna do to prevent, like the previous guy said, what are we gonna do to prevent future incidents? Or, God forbid, worse incidents? Because, you know, you turn the news on today, and you hear, you hear this all the time, you know, the next school. And we all think East Brunswick is great, but it can happen anywhere. We shouldn't think, we shouldn't think that worse things can't happen here. So, and I think it is our responsibility to make the environment as safe as we can. I mean, how do we expect kids to learn if they don't feel safe, right? If they're worried about being attacked, you know, they're not gonna be learning. So that's all I got, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, everybody. For the record, my name is Greg Bing. I'm here today because some of my friends in this community let me know what happened in the school. Those friends also asked me to identify myself as a member of the Central Jersey Democratic Socialists of America. And, thank you. And though I can't speak on behalf of the Central Jersey chapter, I'm only making a personal statement. One of the values that we stand for is mutual aid, so I'm happy to be here in aid of my friends and neighbors in this community who are feeling threatened by what has happened and the response that's coming forward for that. So my personal statement is as follows. Okay, so this is a disturbing incident that took place at a time and a context that makes this all the more unsettling. The zero tolerance policy that the school has put in place in this situation is punishing a student for being attacked, and in particularly attacked for her faith. This is a response that I have to condemn, it is inelegant, to say the least. You know, as some others have shared before me, I too, in my youth, was suspended in a zero tolerance policy after being attacked. My school failed to protect me, and I was punished as a result. I cannot imagine how much harder that would have been if my faith had been a motivator in the violence that I received. Policies can be changed, and this tragedy provides, this, excuse me, this tragedy provides an opportunity for this board to hear the concerns of their constituents and the community writ large, to act in a way that shows that all residents of this town are gonna be valued and protected by their municipality, regardless of their faith, or their background, or whatever other element of their identity is at play. This is especially important to do for children. You know, the alienation and fear that can be engendered by receiving an attack like this, and not receiving the full support of your community. As a child, I can't imagine, you know, how difficult that would be for the child, for the family, and for anybody in the community that cares about that person. So I have to condemn the suspension, condemn the attack, and I urge... Policies are not laws, they can be changed relatively easily, I urge you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, next, please.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Sally Fong. I live on Devon Drive in East Brunswick. And I made a brief list, so I'm just gonna run through it. So I'd like to point out a couple of things that caught my attention in an earlier piece of mail that was sent out. I would, I'm concerned a little bit about any unconscious biases that may exist in this board. Not to call anyone out, but in the previous letter, let me see if I could pull it up. It says, "What seems to be clear regarding the incident is that a young Muslim woman was involved in a physical altercation with another young lady." So this was, this was sent out earlier today, and it, it just seems like the phrasing that describes the two girls is different. I think that's very biased, and I think that's something that should have been considered. I know, I know it wasn't the intent.
What letter are you referencing?
It was sent April 11, 2019, there's no, like, time on it.
I'm sorry?
April 11, Brad J. Cohen, mayor.
That didn't come from us.
That didn't come from us.
Well, I mean, if it's all like local government, I think that's something that should be discussed and addressed within, within your group.
I know, I just wanted you to know, that's all.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification. So in addition, I think that there is some lack of transparency in a lot of the policies. So I'd like to just spark some curiosity within everyone here. This is, these are not answers that I know, and I think you should know them. So like, what are the formal policies regarding suspension? What are the formal policies regarding expulsion? And what are the factors that, you know, weigh in? Is it decided by you, is it decided by the board? And also, we know that the charge was originally not deemed as a bias incident, but now that it is, it's also not a hate crime. So, you know, I'm just wondering, what are the formal definitions of it? Because of course, we all have our own definitions. But I think in order for everyone to be on the same page, we all have to be aligned on that. And I was also a little concerned about the vagueness and the downplay in some of the information that was sent out. I think it has to be portrayed more accurately. If it does involve race, if it does involve religion, I think it should be tackled head-on and not dodged. Another, another thing that I'm proposing is that I think there has to be a change in policy. Not only the zero tolerance policy, I know a lot of people have spoken about that previously. But maybe some policy regarding the training of the teachers or of security. So I know a lot of the students voiced that some of the security, not that they don't do their job, but maybe it's not being done effectively or efficiently, as well as the training for the teachers. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I know that teachers are not supposed to physically get involved when students are fighting. And it just confuses me, because if someone's in a fetal position on the floor, you know, you say you should really walk away, how do you, how do you walk away from that, right? As a teacher, as a teacher...
Excuse me, ma'am, one minute.
Thank you. Like, can you step, can a teacher step in, right? And if they do, should they be worried about their job? Right? And a lot of the students, they're saying, you know, the teachers weren't getting involved, or not, not enough teachers were getting involved, like, in the moment. And, you know, maybe, maybe it's an issue of liability, but that shouldn't be an issue in these cases. So maybe that's another thing to evaluate. You know, I was always taught, don't be a bystander, right? But, but it seems like the policies for the schools, not only for the kids, but for the teachers, for the staff, everyone's so afraid to, you know, get in trouble, that they don't, they just become bystanders, right? By choice, by conscious choice. So I think that's something to think about.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Shazan Youssef, I'm an East Brunswick alumni. And today, I went to work, and, you know, you sit around or talk on the water cooler in break time, and you're telling your coworkers what you heard from your siblings at home. And I was telling my one Middle Eastern older coworker about this issue that happened in school. And I said, you know, there was an incident, and a hijabi woman got beat up, and he, he stopped me right there, and he said, "I swear to you, Shazan, I told my daughter not to wear the hijab in school for this reason, because I feared that she would have gotten beat." would've gotten beat or assaulted." And it broke me, because a lot, I was born and raised here, but I know a lot of the parents that are sitting here today, my parents and a lot of people here, it came to the States because, multiple reasons, but one of them being to practice their religion freely, you know, for the American dream. And the fact that, the fact that this incident occurred is, isn't, it's not going, we're not going forward, we're taking a step back. And I know this isn't something that, you know, it starts from us. Us as peers, as older siblings, as officials, we need to teach our teachers, to educate our teachers better, our peers better, it starts from us. And, um, you know, and to everyone sitting in this room, and you guys, us, we're all in it together. And if we all do our part, hopefully, we can stop this next time. And how do you think that that girl, when she comes back, the one who was, both of them that were suspended, they come back, the hijabi girl who got assaulted, and the abuser, when she sees her and looks her in the eye, what, what do you think is gonna, does she even wanna be back at school at this point? Do you think that she wants to walk the halls with people snickering as she walks by, "Oh, she was the one who got hit. Oh, she was the one who got beat." Like, do, like, is that gonna... Honestly, you know, they tell you all the effects of cyberbullying, you know, and, and that's, and no one's denying that cyberbullying is not a big thing, but this was an in-person assault. And you know how much toll that takes? That takes a lot of toll on a person. And lastly, lastly, I wanna elaborate on the fact that, is it fair that the hijabi who got assaulted, who got beat up, gets to miss her education for three days because of the zero tolerance policy? Right? Does she get to, what if she needs extra help in a subject, now that she can't even stay after school for, because she's not even allowed on school grounds for the next three days? Right? We all saw that a teacher had to physically restrain the abuser, and even then, got shots in. Now, I agree, you know, maybe she should, if she would've pushed back in the beginning or some, whatever that happened, but like everyone else said before me, if someone's getting, if you, you personally, or your son and daughter is getting beat up, are you gonna tell them, "Let's let them hit you?" And turn the other cheek, "Hit me over here, too"? No, you're gonna stand up for yourself. Right? Let's try to make it a better deal.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please.
Assalamualaikum, everyone, and good evening, the board.
I'm sorry, could you say your name again?
Yeah, it's Omama Zeberry.
Thank you.
And, uh, I graduated from EBHS in 2012, and I'm extremely sad to be here today, speaking about this topic. As an EBHS alumna, I could not possibly imagine that something like this could have happened in the very halls that I walked through just a few years ago. But today, I'm here to advocate for the victim who was attacked. I don't personally know her, but we're connected through the cloth that we wear on our heads. I am imploring you to reconsider the, the decision to suspend the victim and reconsider the zero, the zero tolerance policy, especially in these special circumstances. She already has gone through so much in being attacked for the very core of her beliefs, and I don't believe that it is fair to further punish her and derail her from her education from being suspended. So, and I'll leave you with this, and I ask you guys this, if the victim was someone that you guys had personally known, and you personally, you know, your daughter, your son, your niece, your nephew, someone that, who you really cared about, what would you do differently? And how would you take on the situation? And how would you react to all the events that have occurred? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Tahir Jadun, and, uh, I am the resident and the father of the kids who goes to the high school. My daughter wears hijab, and she goes to Churchill. And just would like to give you a background, when I moved to this East Brunswick, and all the people, the board also knows, the people come to this town just because of the school system. And I moved to the, to the town because of the school system, and I was very happy from the school system. And I was the biggest advocate to all my friends who are living, was living on the other towns, because they knew that my daughter, even from the grade second, she was wearing a hijab, and they all had the only one question, "How's your daughter doing?" They didn't ask me about my sons. They always asked me, "How's your daughter doing?" And I was so positive and so advocating for the school system, and at the same time, I admired the school teachers. In that age, when she was in a elementary school, she, teachers taught her to stand for yourself. And whenever she come back, and while talking to the parents, we do something wrong, and she stands up, and he says, "Oh, my teacher said, 'Stand for yourself.'" But unfortunately, today, I was, yesterday, I was really disappointed, the teacher who taught the kids to stand for yourself, and the board has decided why you stood for yourself. And you are being punished, and you are out, and you are suspended. And with zero tolerance, it was a headline, and everybody says, "Oh, I, we have a, in our workplace, we have a zero tolerance." But this is the first time I learned myself what the Board of Education, East Brunswick Board of Education Zero Tolerance means, that the one who stand for himself, you've been suffered also. So you have no right to stand for yourself. You just present yourself to the oppressor, that he, whatever you want to do, and you have to keep quiet. And the second, the most, the other thing, this, today, we learned that the witness, wherever you are a witness, be stand, because you have a biggest responsibility. Because if something happens to me, I will be having my statement, and the, my opponent having his own statement. And at that time, the witness is the one who has a neutral statement. Today, the time has changed. Today, the witnesses are not the people. It's your security cams, right now, though, recording me. My behavior is recording me, the way I'm talking, they are recording me, and the person who videotaped has already been suffered, and he's been suspended. This I learned, that the one who made the video, if this video has not been out, or has not been shown to the people, believe me, neither, none of you, neither us, will become to know about this incident, what's really happened. Yes. So this is very important, that we need to think on this, that what really zero tolerance mean? Zero tolerance mean justice, not injustice. So that's very important. And I would like to suggest, uh, over here, because definitely, uh, as a school, since you're board, you like to, so, I will suggest, I was talking to one of the school kids, that at this time, school does not have any interfaith clubs. We have a Islamic clubs, different clubs, that clubs. I will suggest school should have a interfaith clubs, where the kids from a different face should, uh, sit together, talk with each other. So whatever the concerns they have, in a normal way, they should talk, and they communicate, and the communication is the biggest thing to talk.
One minute, sir.
Yes. And of, the last thing, during, under that interfaith club, I will suggest, school should arrange a visits of the kids to the mosques, to the synagogues, to the churches, so the people, they should become familiar as a one family. So, the last thing, when I were coming over here, my daughter was, was thinking to, I was, she was saying, "I would like to go with you," but because she want to know, and this whole community would like to listen at the end of the day, because we are not here to give the speeches, but we like to know from the school board, at the end of this meeting, what action you are going to take place. So I will, I will like, at the end, we like to listen, some action items that you concluded from our concerns, and you say that, okay, in week, or three days, four days, this is the action item, we, we are holding another meeting to revise the policy, or whatever your concern is. But we like to take this message back to our kids, because they are concerned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Shiruk Khalil. Um, I'm a resident in East Brunswick. I'm also an educator. I've been teaching for ten years at a public school system. And, uh, a few things I just wanna talk about. One, I feel we need more diversity in the staff. Um, when I was first hired after college, I was in Bergen County, and I was the only Muslim teacher there with a higab, and it changed the atmosphere of the school. And that's something you have to look forward to. Um, there's diversity in the school, and we need to bring more, a Muslim teacher with a higab on, just to put it as a symbol out there. Another thing is the no tolerance policy. I am an educator, I understand that we might not change it, but I was wondering if we're able to amend it pertaining to this situation. A third thing is the HIP policy. So this student has six or seven altercations, and I just wanna read the policy in the state of New Jersey. Um, harassment, intimidation, or bullying means any gesture in written, verbal, or physical act, or any electronic communication, whether it be a single incident or a series of incidents, that is reasonably, reasonably perceived as being motivated either by any actual or perceived characteristics, such as race, color, ancestry, national origin, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, or an expression of mental, physical, or sensory disability, or by other distinguishing characteristic that take place on school property, at any school-sponsored function, or school bus, or off-school grounds, as provided for in section sixteen, that disrupts or interferes with the orderly operation of the school, um, or the rights of the student. And that, A, a reasonable person should know, under the circumstances, will have the effect of physically harm a student, harming a student, or damaging the student's property, or lacing a student in reasonable fear of physical or emotional harm to this person, or damage to the property. Now, another thing about the HIP policy, there's consequences. Consequences and appropriate remedial action for students who commit and act under HIP range from positive behavior intervention to including suspension or expulsion. Based on the discipline action that I am seeing, this student is coming back in nine days after six to seven altercations. We have to take the HIP policy seriously. I am an educator, first few days of school, I have to research the HIP policy, I have to do, we, we have workshops on it, teachers have to take it. Now, if you're telling me, you know, I, I personally believe, like, I'm an educator, I, I, I love students, you know, I don't wanna see a student expelled, I don't want anything bad to happen to a student. But if this student has been causing harm six or seven times, this HIP policy better be active, and this student should have more consequence than just a suspension.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, all board members, and good evening, participants. Uh, thank you for being here this late to hear all the residents and their concerns, and thank you, all the participants, for showing up and speaking up.
Your name, please, sir.
My name is Nasir Siddiqui.
Your name, please, sir.
Nasir Siddiqui.
Thank you.
And I am a resident here for, uh, more than thirteen years. Uh, my three, uh, I'm a parent of three kids, uh, all of my kids have been educated in East Brunswick. Two are still in the school system, my seventeen-year-old daughter, who is in eleventh grade, and an eleven-year-old, uh, who is in the elementary, fifth, uh, who's going to the, the middle sex, uh, I mean, the middle school, uh, Hammerhole. Um, well, I have always felt very good, um, to live in a town which cherished diversity and value inclusion. Um, also, I always felt proud, uh, to be in a town, uh, in the educational school district, uh, you know, of high standard. Uh, I always felt very good about it. Um, and I really commend the board members for making, uh, you know, concerted efforts over all these years, to make it happen, to have our educational standards maintained, and, uh, even improve these educational standards. Now, there have been concerns, really, over the years also, um, and there were incidents that I was concerned. Um, I always heard incidents of bullying, I heard about, um, racial slurs on, uh, social media, and I was surprised at how these things are going unnoticed. I mean, there is a policy in place of cyberbullying, and nobody is taking notice. The kids, when they, when they feel free to go, you know, curse, and hatred, and, you know, make fun of, uh, you know, other faith, or race, creed, or color, I'm not talking about just one particular faith here. Uh, I want that, that the policy should be, um, zero tolerance against, uh, against, uh, any intolerance, and any discrimination. That's what the intolerance policy, uh, the zero tolerance policy should be. So I always felt bad that, uh, these kids who do that on the social media, uh, they felt emboldened, because nothing is happening. Nobody's taking any notice of all these things. They, they are free to say whatever they say, and the policy is there, just on paper. It's not being implemented. So those were the concerns. I remember, um, four years ago, I was told my, my daughter told me, um, incidents of bullying and, you know, hate, actually, on the buses, on one of the buses, she particularly told me. Um, and I heard that there were students, were, there were some students who were yelling, who were cursing the driver, who were shouting at the driver, were standing, not listening to the driver. I said, "Come on, how, how is this possible?" I went to the transportation manager, talked to the transportation manager, "This is unacceptable. My child is on the bus, and the students are not listening to the driver." Driver saying, "Oh, go back to the country, your country," and, and cursing, simply just, you know, plain cursing, and, and racial slurs. Uh, so, that was unacceptable to me, and, uh, well, manager took some actions, I believe, and, uh, those incidents, uh, I was told that kind of...
One minute, sir.
Diminished?
One minute.
Yes, okay. And, so, uh, but they didn't go away. So anyway, I'm saddened today to hear so many students, and they are sharing their stories that they were in an atmosphere of fear, they were, they felt unsafe, and, uh, I'm saddened that why, you know, this happened to them, and no action was taken. So, um, um, I'm, I have questions, I have suggestions. Questions that, why silence? Why inaction for so many years? These incidents were happening, and these were being reported, and no action was taken. So that's, those are the questions that, uh, for you board members to, to answer. Uh, why this silence? Why this inaction for so long? Otherwise, this should have been, there should have been put a, a stop to these, uh, you know, these bullying and, uh, kind of intolerance. Uh, suggestions, uh, before me, there are, there have been speakers who have offered their help, uh, for interfaith clubs...
Excuse me, sir.
...dialogues.
Time.
And, uh, you know, so I just want to finish, you know, lastly...
Sir, it's time.
Yes, okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Aruba Youssef. I'm a twelfth grader at EBHS. I would like to, um, talk about some points that have already been talked about, but from my perspective. So, the day this incident happened, um, this was early in the morning, before first period, and I walked into school, just as I normally do, and I was walking up to my group of friends, like I normally do, in front of the cafeteria. As I was walking up, um, to my group of friends, I heard, um, screams, I heard people, I heard girls screaming, I heard people screaming everywhere. All I heard were screams of "Help, help!" And then I saw a group of people gathering around. That is when I thought, the first thought that came to my head was, okay, there's another fight in school. I walked up, and I just kept on hearing the words, "Help, help, and help." I did not see a single student, I did not see a single security guard, I did not see a single teacher try to go and stop them, or try to help out the people who were in the fight. The first thought that entered my brain was that we are always told to not be a bystander. However, we are also told that if we even try to stop a fight, and if we even try to stop the fight from happening, we will get some sort of punishment. Same with the teachers. I've heard that the teachers are not allowed to physically remove the students, they're only allowed to go up to them and physically remove them just by their two-hand policies, which is, I don't find that fair. I find it really fascinating that we have security officers, but in every entrance of the school, we have security officers in every hall, but there was no, not one security officer in the scene of the location that it was, the fight was happening? Where was one security officer? Where was all the teachers that roam around the building? I find that very fascinating. And then, when I found out that the girl who was involved was a hijabi, my heart dropped. This was a classmate of mine, a class fellow of mine, I've known her for a while. I saw her in the corner fixing her hijab, I saw her literally shaking, her hair messed up, her hijab messed up. I put myself in her shoes, and tears came down. I did not just imagine myself, I imagined all the other young girls coming, who are going to enter the school next year, who are now afraid that they are going to, like, they're going to see something like this happening to themselves or to their friends. We see these types of incidents happening across the world. The New Zealand this thing happened, and you would, you never thought that this would happen. and you would never thought that this would happen to us, but now our school is being labeled and targeted because of this incident. This girl is being targeted because of this incident. When she comes back to school, people will talk. Whether we're supporting her, whether we're all taking her side, whether all these people are here to help her out, this girl is known because of this incident. I pray for her, I pray for her family, and I really hope we change these rules so that teachers and students can help out when in need. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, please.
My phone died, or else I would have a speech. My name is Rana Sakin. I am a previous graduate from East Brunswick High School, and I just wanted to, it's really hard not to get emotional about something like this, you know? I am a born Muslim, born and raised, and I just want to address everyone here on the board. I really hope that you guys are listening to every single thing that these citizens are bringing up to your attention, because it is very concerning. It really is. It is so sad that someone has to go to school and not feel safe. This girl did not feel safe in school. And school should be about a place that you grow up, you get an education, and you move on to a career. I felt like East Brunswick High School prepared me for the career where I'm in right now. I'm a nurse. I'm a nurse in a hospital where I care for a variety of people. I care for anyone, despite how they look, despite their religion, despite anything. I care for them, because they're a human being. That's what they deserve. I'm truly saddened by this news. I'm saddened for this girl's family. I don't know if what we're doing is enough. I don't think it's fair that this girl was suspended. Suspended for doing nothing. She can't sit here and walk around and express her faith and her religion because of hatred. Why? Why is that okay? I don't agree with something that two other individuals stated. It's not about, you know, white people that are attacking people of color, because there has been white people that were here. Different people from different, like, different, you know, white people, black people, you know, and all different types of people came today in support and to advocate for this young lady. It's very important for you guys to see this. It was brought to my attention that the aggressor, this was her seventh incident. Seventh incident. It might not be all about race. It might not. But this girl is a mean girl. She's a mean girl, and she attacked someone just because, because she felt tough. And what the school is doing for that is suspending her, giving her a vacation for ten days. You know how you see that? I'm gonna go to Maryland for my vacation, because I'm suspended. Do you think she cares about school? She doesn't. She doesn't care. And the girl that got attacked, she's also suspended. I honestly hope you guys reconsider this decision about her returning back to school. I hope she does get expelled. If there is something we can do to help her on the outside, we can do that for her. Because guess what? She's not ten years old. She knows what is right and what is wrong. And this is plain wrong. She is not even a year, a few months away, from graduating, going into the outside world. This behavior is unacceptable. It's unacceptable. And as a citizen, and as a resident of East Brunswick, I feel it shouldn't be allowed. It shouldn't be allowed. And I really hope, I sincerely hope that everybody heard every point of view that was addressed today. I hope it wasn't put through one ear and out the other. And I hope there's gonna be action that's gonna be taking place. Thank you.
Ma'am, the one thing I can assure you is we are listening every single word. Nina Jocknewitz, resident of Middlesex County since 1982. Some of you may have gone to Chittick School when you were children. I don't know. My mother was your teacher. Okay? That said, I'm gonna ask for, what is it, five minutes? Right, five minutes we have, right? So let's take five minutes of silence for all the victims of biased attacks. Is that okay with you? Thank you. No, thank you. Thank you for those five minutes. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Rokaya. Excuse my shaky voice, public speaking, not my forte. But I just wanted to say that, well, first of all, when I was a student in high school, I recall in a lot of situations where there would be bullying and prejudice, some, you know, targeted toward my scarf, some just because kids are mean. And it's a paradoxical situation, that they put us in. Because they tell us, oh, tell the teacher that you're, you know, being bullied. But when you do that, it paints a target on your back that's even bigger, because now you're a snitch. And now, it's even worse, it's an even worse situation. It becomes an even worse situation for you. And then they say, ignore them. They'll get bored. It'll pass. And it's already hard enough being a teenager. I'm sure you all remember. And going to school, especially high school, where all of the kids are changing, hormones are crazy, and it's really hard already going to school and, you know, learning and dealing with all of that without having a situation where somebody is making it difficult for you to learn. And I always thought zero tolerance meant that it was zero tolerance, where they don't tolerate racism and prejudice. But now I realize that it just means that we will punish the victim for standing up for themselves, because violence is, because they, you know, had, they were violent. And I feel like, as educators, it should be recognized that not all violence is equal. You have, there's violence in physical aggression, and offense and defense, and there's violence of marginalization. And if you have a student who's exercising both offense and marginalization, and you only punish the student whose violence was out of defense, even though, and the one who's, the one who was, you know, doing it, like the abuser, like that other lady said, she doesn't care about school. You're not punishing her by telling her, "Oh, ten days, you're suspended", but you are punishing the one who was violent out of defense. And you are demonstrating that that's the form of violence you're willing to accept, because you're punishing the one who was defending themselves out of an education. And that doesn't seem like, it seems counterproductive to get her to stop, you know, having an education. And if you, in good conscience, allow that girl to suffer, then their intention, your intention as educators should be to equip your students. And your responsibility is to empower them, not tell them that you're supposed to just stand there and take it. Like, what was expected of this girl? If she had just let the girl hit her, and let her beat her, would that have been, would that have stopped her from getting suspended? Is that what was expected of her? No. If somebody is being violent, all the rules go out the window. And in a situation where no one saw what happened, I understand that. But everyone saw what happened. I go to Middlesex, and I found out what happened like an hour after it happened. And people saw this girl constantly berate the Muslim girl for her scarf, for her, telling her, "Oh, you smell, oh, blah, blah, blah", like, something like that, it should be clear what the punishment is. And I hope that the abuser does not come back to school, because she doesn't deserve to be in school if she, all she uses it as is hunting grounds for her to find her next victim. And that's, yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Fahim Sorwardi. I'm a resident of 21 Dearun Court. I have three children in East Brunswick school system. I'm also the president of Islamic Center of East Brunswick. I've been waiting here, quietly listening to all my fellow brothers and sisters talk about the situation. And you can understand the concerns that we have. You can hear them, the concern, the, I mean, it's just very sad, the incident, the way it happened. And we are looking to the board for some help. We are here to help you. If you want to educate programs and stuff, we can assist you with that. The main issue is, you fear what you don't know. So we are here to assist the school. We made this community ours. We want to, our kids to grow here, and we want to help as we, whatever we can. One thing, what we would request is the better communication. Yesterday, all the rumors were flying. We were getting calls left and right. People saying, "This happened, that happened." You don't know what's going on. So as a parent, and as a president of the Islamic Center, I request, please communicate. Just an email out to saying, okay, this is what you happened, and taking care, being cared of. We didn't hear anything till this morning. I mean, I appreciate, Mr. Velazki, your kind words about the situation, but we need some actions. I mean, we have been hearing about it. Like, my daughter came up here and said that she's been done. That's the first time I heard about it, because the kids don't talk. And we, as a parent, and you as the administrator, need to do something. So please, either schedule another meeting, because half the people who are standing outside left without, they couldn't wait. And we need some tangible resolution out of this thing. I want to keep it brief. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Alexandra Duque. I'm a senior at East Brunswick High School. And I'm here today because I realized, see, I moved here from Connecticut the summer of 2017. And I came from an all-girls Catholic high school. Most of the population was white. I'm Hispanic. Ever since I was little, I've gone through Catholic school. And even in Catholic school, I was still bullied, I was harassed. And when I moved here, I looked at East Brunswick, and I thought, okay, this is a place where I see that there is diversity, where I can be myself, where I can express myself. And the victim, I know her as a friend. And she's just, she's a wonderful person. She's always so nice. She's always trying to help people. And the events that took place yesterday, they broke my heart to see, to see someone so nice get treated so poorly by other people. And it makes me wonder, how should I feel in a, in a high school, where I don't, I walk into East Brunswick High School, and my first thought was, okay, everyone is, you know, united. But then I started realizing, okay, there's cliques. And I, changing schools in high school, when you're a junior, the cliques that exist, they're already formed. Now, you walk into the school, you have, you need to meet new people. You don't have any friends when you get here. And I had to find my, I had to make new friends. And I don't belong to any clique, because all the cliques have been formed. And just thinking about the fact that somebody, because of religion, because of race, ethnicity, whatever it may be, gets picked on, it makes me wonder, should I feel safe that that happens? Like, what happens if I'm next? I don't know if I'll be next, if I'll be the one to get beat up because I'm Hispanic, because of my opinion. And I feel like that should not be. With such a good education that we get here, with people that are smart people, that should be able to handle things, they should be able to come up with a way that not everything in life is black and white, and we can't just categorize everything as black and white. There are cases where, yes, you have to, I guess, bend the guidelines to fit the circumstance. Because you can't just, the picture isn't, doesn't look nice if it's just black and white. There has to have color to it. Because without the color, it's just, like, bland.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Saud Asaf. I'm resident of East Brunswick, 24 Pansbury Way. I have five kids that has gone through this school system, so it's tough act to follow for everybody else, I think. So I think, based on what you have heard so far, the message is loud and clear to you guys that we need to demonstrate this, this, the zero tolerance policy that you've been talking about. It looks like this community has no tolerance for this zero tolerance policy. I think this, I think this is something that we need to look into immediately, because there's a girl who's waiting. And I think you guys need to make a decision to remove the punishment, whatever you have for her, so that she can come back and join the school tomorrow. And the thing is that, as a lot of people came here to offer help, I think we need to make sure that Board of Education work with these organizations. There was Ikna, there was Waislam, there's other organization. And I think the school system needs to institute new programs. If it means that you guys need to change the curriculum, change the curriculum. I think one area that nobody talked about is the East Brunswick Drama. one area that nobody talked about is the East Brunswick Drama Club, right? That should be one avenue that we should look into. Sponsor some, some interfaith drama for, to, so that we can educate other kids about the different biases that's happening around the country and in this town as well. And I think you guys need to choose a medium of communication which you guys need to use to, you know, impart the information to the residents here. And also, I mean, we wanted to know, what are your concrete steps that you're going to take based on what you have heard so far before we come here again? We will, we will be here next time as well if there is, if no action is taken again. And we will keep on coming here. And if it means that you need to change the laws, let us know. We'll make it happen. We'll, we'll unite a lot of people to make changes in the laws. Because, because we're talking about our kids, and I'm afraid to send my kids, and my three kids have already gone through the school system. When they heard about it, they said, I mean, nothing is going to happen. And I know, I, I have gone through this, and a lot of times, my kids were involved in, uh, you know, this kind of altercations, and they were always on the receiving side. And the same thing happened to them as well. And it was always a hush, hush kind of a situation, well, push it under the carpet. What happened? Oh, there, there was some fight of, and, and it's all gory, gory stuff. It's, it's no more. I think it's time you can see the community is standing, and they want some action, they want some changes. If it means change in the law, tell us if you can't change the law. We will make it happen. And, and six times offender, I really, you know, sympathize with the parents of that girl. But from your point of view, I think you need to make those people accountable. If it happened the first time, what was, what were the actions? If it happened second time, what were the actions? Third time, what happened? Fourth time, what happened? Fifth time, what happened? What the heck people were doing when these things were happening, continuously happening? And this is the seventh time? It will be eighth time. I'm afraid because these things will continue. It is a matter of time. Anybody will switch?
One minute, sir.
Sure. Anybody can go bad, mad, and, and what happened will be a much uglier situation. So we need to tackle it right now. And we are here, I think we are expecting you to tell us what are the actionable items that you have noted and what are the things that you will be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Your name, please.
Hi, my name is Mustanser Mian. I'm a new, um, East Brunswick resident. My two children has gone to the school system, and my daughter is in the 12th grade. A lot have been said already, so I'm not going to repeat that, but just going to share one personal, um, experience. Since the, this incident, I have received more than 10 calls from my family and, family and other friends. And guess what, what they're saying? Tell your daughter, stop wearing the hijab, because that's the only way she can be safe. And this is really heartbreaking. Rather than sport and coming, hey, you need to stand up, and they need to give my daughter the courage, the message is, tell her to, to take the hijab off. I, I moved from Old Bridge about nine years ago, and one thing, the main reason was that the East Brunswick school system is really great, and it is. And it's because of nice people like you who are sitting here, and you have done a lot, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
I know it was high emotions, so a lot had been said to the board members, but where we are as a community and this school is because of you and the community who is, who is here. And I have no doubt in my mind that what you listen today, you will take the action, appropriate actions to, to make sure it doesn't happen again. I do have one question, when this incident happens, what do we do for the victim and what do we do for the suspect? I know there are emotions, angers, there are certain situations, um, can we suspend, can we expel the student? But once such incident happens, what are the programs here where we can intervene and come up with a support plan for the aggressor as well as for the victim? That's, that's all from me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sir, anyone else who wishes to address the board?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Yaster Samra. Can you guys hear me? Because I'm not sure if the microphone's working. All right, it's 11:17, and you find, young, ladies and gentlemen, sitting up here without a bathroom break, so I'll be very, very brief. All right? So I have some notes. Uh, thank you, thank you for everyone who came out today. Uh, thank you for allowing us to express our frustrations and our concerns. I'm a resident of Old Bridge, and I graduated from a school called Cedar Ridge. I don't know if you guys know Cedar Ridge, but it doesn't exist anymore. And I'll tell you about my one experience, one experience in a fight that I had where I didn't really defend myself. I didn't defend myself really at all. I think I got one kick in because I was on the ground. I was allowed to be reinstated that very same day with all my cuts and my bruises, and the perpetrator was suspended for five days. And when he came back, he never bothered me again. But I wonder, I wonder, I wonder, was it Dr. Burns, our school principal at the time? Was he just being nice to me because my sister spoke up for me? I really don't know. Need to listen to what my physics teacher, Mr. Guineri, told him. What he, what he told him about my being attacked, and he understood that I wasn't at fault. I don't know. What I do know is that I was lucky enough to not be suspended. Uh, but I wonder about this young victim, and if she or anyone else gets suspended for defending herself or for not doing nothing. I got to tell you, I didn't watch the video. But I do have two boys, and I still live in Old Bridge, and I have considered coming to East Brunswick for the school system, not for the property taxes. But I'm reminded of some words by Malcolm X, though. And I'm going to paraphrase, and I'm going to be a little bit more lenient than Malcolm X was. And that is, respect everyone and obey the law, but if someone puts their hands on you and you can't get away, and you're getting beaten, then you better send them to the nurse's office by the end of that day. And so in closing, if this is the case, then unfortunately, unfortunately, you're going to have to prepare yourselves for worse, unfortunately. Because I know that if I'm going to be suspended for doing nothing, then you can bet on my defending myself if the result is going to be the same. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, I will close the public portion. I thank you all so much for coming out tonight, for waiting. We listened. I'd like to take a three-minute recess, okay? Thank you. We are starting, we are picking up with our meeting. I would like a motion for the rest of the agenda, please. Moved by Mrs. Lacks, second by Mr. Seeler. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Apologize.
Who were?
We apologize.
I apologize to you from earlier.
Okay.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Seeler.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes. Motion carried. We now come to committee reports, information items, and the good of the cause for the board. So first, Kirtina, do you have a report for us tonight?
Um, I'm going to try my best to make it very quick, um, but something that I guess I should talk about considering that everyone came out here tonight is about transparency because something that the students really needed was transparency. So we had that opportunity actually at the high school today where Dr. Vanilla was able to call down various groups, so the Islamic, um, the Islamic Club, they had the opportunity to doc, talk to Dr. Vanilla, um, and also various student leaders such as the student council president, um, and class council presidents and secretaries and treasurers, and myself, we had the opportunity to listen and understand the process of exactly what went down with the situation. Obviously, we aren't disclosed, um, we aren't privy to many of the details because we, there are laws that we have to respect and privacy regulations that we do have to respect. But it was, this information was privy to the individuals who came to ask. And I think something that is very important, especially in a day and age where fake news is prevalent and social media runs rampant with things that come, um, very quickly and immediately, transparency is very important. And although it is very hard to act immediately in a situation such as this, and I completely understand how administration has to take the time to, um, process the situation and conduct its investigations, especially in category, categorizing this as a bias, um, as a bias incident, um, transparency, again, is something that is very, very important, and that is what many of the students are concerned about, um, in terms of this report. So I think it is something that is very important, and hopefully transparency continues to happen, um, even more transparency if preferable, and that's my report as liaison.
Thank you. Are there any committee reports before we do the good of the cause for the board?
I don't know if it's a committee report, Human Relations Council?
Yeah, sure, it's a committee.
Okay, so Human Relations Council, I just want to mention, there are a couple of, of, um, upcoming events that may be of interest to everybody, and it will go up on the Facebook page, so if you haven't already liked it, follow the EBHRC, um, Human Relations Council Facebook page, because that's where events are promoted. There will be an interfaith event, um, where interfaith leaders are being brought together for a community discussion. And they're also working with the schools for a mix-it-up day, which I don't have the details yet, but it'll be coming up soon, so we'll, we'll have more on that.
Thank you. Anybody else, committee report, good of the cause, anyone have anything to say?
Is there going to be a discussion or reaction to any of this, or is this all going to be a closed session?
Um, I don't know about anyone else, but I need a little while to digest before I even can talk about this.
Can I just say one thing?
A lot of things to think about. I have questions, I'm sure we all do. I've got a page full of notes. I'd like answers to certain things also.
And then we'll bring it back out.
I'm not sure, actually, um, I don't have all the answers. And I don't, I'm not quite sure what our next step should be or should look like. But I think that we're going to make that decision as a group and figure out with the help of our administrators, the best forum to do it in.
Well, I'm just, well, you know, I'm just thinking that, let's see, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty, forty-five, fifty. Fifty-two people stood up here tonight.
Absolutely.
And waited, and I think at some point, extremely soon, whether it be after closed session, that they have an opportunity to see at least an initial response. I think they deserve that. Whether, whether it be just saying, we heard you, whether it just being, if they have, if they hit a nerve, but I think they spent an enormous amount of time.
We were all listening intently.
What's that?
We were all listening intently. I think Vicki reinforced that a few times.
I, I, yeah, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I also think that those, those 52 people and all the other people here have a lot of respect for us because what came through to me was that we are all in this together. And people said to me afterwards, we're so angry, but we're not angry at you. I, I don't know if, um, I mean, that's just my opinion. I'm one of nine right now. I don't know if I'm going to be ready to make any decision or come to a conclusion. I, there's so much to think of. I have so many questions about logistics, policies and, and courses and definitions and clubs and security guards and more policies. Kind of want answers to all of this and let it marinate. I want to give an answer to those people.
I'm not saying give an answer, uh, but one of the things, besides all those things that came up quite often, was transparency or the lack thereof. And, and I, and again, I think it goes back to the process. Um, I, I'm not saying have a, have a definitive discussion about what we're going to do policy-wise. I think they deserve a response. I think, I think they deserve at least a very high level response. There were a lot of very, very compelling things said here tonight.
Then...
I'm, I'm, I'm bringing it to you.
No, please, no, please don't. We're all in this together.
I mean, what are the react, what is, I mean, we're, look, if you want to hold back and say nothing, we go into the back room and then we come out with an idea, let's do that. I just, I think they deserve something more.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute.
I, I agree with Vicki. I think, um, we, we need to absorb, there was a lot of information here, and there's certain, certainly follow-ups we'd like to hear about, um, to have a really robust, educated discussion. I think we need some more information. I, I don't have all the facts, right? So I think folks in the public probably knew more about what happened than I do. So for, before I'm prepared to talk about it, I'd like to know more. And so that's, I, I think we need to have a chance to catch up with what actually happened.
And I also think that Vicki did do a good job of saying, we heard you, and you think about it.
She did, she did say that.
If you're asking for a response, though, Jeff, respectfully, I think that's a really good response, is we've heard you, we're going to take the information, and we're going to come to a conclusion. But if the idea is to rush the conclusion out, I, I don't know that that helps anymore.
I didn't suggest rush any conclusion out. And I said, and, and I didn't suggest even discussing any type of policy change or anything like that, but I don't know, to dismiss three hours.
Absolutely, not dismiss.
Not dismiss. Well, let me finish my sentence, please.
Please, that's very upsetting to even hear you say dismiss.
The word dismiss? Well, don't, you don't need to be upset about the word dismiss until you hear the rest of my statement, and then you can decide if it fit the context, that what made you upset. Uh, but I'm saying, I think it's very, I think it's, uh, based on the number of times transparency was mentioned in this conversation, I think dismissing the idea of speaking about any of it now, I think leaves, uh, leaves the, the, uh, the, uh, the group empty. And I don't know how many times that we need to go through this and, and, and be accused of it before we finally learn a lesson. But if that is the feeling of the board, that there's nothing that comes out transparently now, then so be it. Uh, it's, uh, it's, it's a point to this public that, uh, they want to know, they want to know, where are we? Where are we, even if it's, even if it's just a thought? I'll stand down. Eight other people on this board, but once again, 52 people took their time and...
So transparently, my view is, I don't have the facts, and I need to know more information before I'm prepared to discuss it, and that's my position.
And I would also caution you not to confuse transparency with certain things, that there's a confidential nature, and you are dealing with...
I'm not, I'm not suggesting bringing a name up at all. Nothing confidential.
But certain questions that we have to ask, and we've all taken our notes, I don't know that we can ask, probably. Some of the questions that we do have, I think, do have a confidential nature. So I'm not trying to be non-transparent, but, you know, I, I hope that these people thought that we've taken it in, and I think Vicki's done a good job with that, and I hope...
I'm not saying she hasn't done a good job, Lori. I'm simply saying that there was, there was an, there's an opportunity to respond to roughly three hours of testimony and questioning, and, and if you feel that you've provided that sufficiently, wow.
I think the response is to come based on doing a little bit of research.
I think we're trying to be honest and saying, I, I'm just blown away by this whole thing.
Right. If I could, if I, the, no matter what the board decides, I just want to let you know this is still an active investigation, and pieces of it are still not complete, they're ongoing. Uh, and as the prosecutor's press release revealed, they're still continuing that process. We did refer up to the prosecutor's office per policy. But that, I, I just leave that with you, it still is an active investigation, so I just wanted to make everyone aware of that.
And that in and of itself, Dr. Velasquez, is a response, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody who hasn't spoken, want to say anything? At this time, I can ask if there is a consensus to have an active discussion about the past few hours. Those board members, we do have a need for a closed session, but we can, if there is... Those board members, we do have a need for a closed session, but we can, if there is a consensus amongst the board, we can stay here and, and discuss it. Or if you feel that you need some more time. So, those who feel they want to discuss now, would you please raise your hand?
You mean, either go discuss things or go home?
No, no, we're not going home.
Because I have a thousand questions. I sort of like to discuss things.
I meant, I meant, we have...
What I would suggest you guys do right now is because this involves students, it involves an active criminal investigation, an ongoing investigation, both criminally and then ultimately at the schools, we should adjourn to closed session to discuss, these are student matters, we should discuss that in closed session. When we adjourn into closed session, we can say that the board may reconvene and action may be taken. And you could reserve that, right, once you have that discussion. But I think it's imperative that we, and I think that the public and the students and a lot of folks get frustrated. This happens all over the state. People get frustrated because they want to know the answer, what happened, what are you doing? And unfortunately, boards of education and administration are bound by privacy laws. They can't discuss it. And I know that's frustrating, it's difficult, but people have to ultimately have faith that when you're dealing with the actual students and what you're going to do with them, that the administration and the board will make the right decisions. That's why we do HIBs in closed session, do disciplines in closed session. It's all outside, outside the public purview. And ultimately, I think that the board could then figure out how they want to respond in the short term and in the long term. But you can have that discussion in, in closed session and always come back out. You don't have to go to closed session and adjourn the meeting. What we do is say, we're going to go to closed session. We anticipate the closed session to be 45 minutes. It's, I think it's quarter to 12, I can't really see it. But quarter to 12, 45 minutes, and we may reconvene and action may be taken. And that at least preserves it so that you guys can come back out if you want to take at least some step or some statement.
I feel that I have so much respect for the people who came out here tonight that I want to be really careful and thoughtful.
And if I may add, I think a lot of the work is not going to be tonight or tomorrow. It's going to be over the long term. And that a commitment to what they said here tonight requires an ongoing effort. And it's, that's going to be the most meaningful over time.
And I think I've gotten to know, you know, many of you pretty well. And I think there's probably not one of, there is not one of us that isn't really absorbing this and, and is personally touched by what we've heard. It's, you know, this is a lot to absorb.
Yep. Well, then, I would like to say that we have a need for closed session.
And we're going to amend it to include the, the student matters. I don't know the student ID, but we're going to...
But the student IDs will be added to the...
Added, but the student matters.
For the items listed on the agenda and the items...
As amended.
As amended. For attorney Matt, can I please have a motion?
Someone.
Moved by Ms. Lax, second by Mr. Seeler. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? I'm the host, staying.
And I would just suggest...
And we will, closed session, it says here, it's estimated to be two hours after the public meeting and the board might reconvene and action may be taken. Can the superintendent write us notes excusing us to go to work late tomorrow?
No, you'll be on time because you'll be leaving right from here to go to work.
Oh, okay. We're in closed session. Thank you very much. Good night.